If conflicts were not noted in those minutes. I'm correcting the fact that some conflicts I declared were omitted from the minutes.
Okay.
There was just an omission of the date of those conflicts. They are contained in the minutes. What she declared the conflict on, it's just the dates of November 28th have to be added to the minutes.
Okay, so okay, Counselor, all right, great. Any other questions on the minutes? All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, thank you. Any disclosures of peculiary interest? Yes, Counselor Ryanone.
Thank you. Check 351156 is made out to my spouse and on two issues, two items in camera downstairs, number seven and number eight of a security report.
Okay. Counselor Morocco, then Wing.
Mayor Diodati, check number 351190, check made out to my spouse.
Okay. Counselor Wing.
Yes, I had a conflict on an in-camera item. I own two property properties.
Okay. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship. Check 351197, and also the wire transfer, both of them to the Niagara Falls district board, my employer.
Okay. And myself, I have check number 351325, a check made out to myself as well. All right. First, we do have a deputation for Tim Horton's Bowl for Kids' Sake. So we'll do our deputation, and then we'll get on with our planning matters. So, Mr. Braithwaite, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Diodati, members of Council. Thanks for having me. It seems like just yesterday that I was here asking you for your support on our Tim Horton's Bowl for Kids' Sake last year, but of course, that was a year ago. And I appreciate the support that this Council showed by participating and helping us reach our goal last year. You might wonder what we've been up to. While last year, in spite of some of our many funding challenges, we did indeed serve more children than we've ever served before. Over 300 children were involved in one of our programs, whether it's our traditional mentoring program, our in-school mentoring program, our Go Girls program, which we run in schools, as well as our Game On program, which is a similar program for boys. So it was a very busy year for us, or stretched staff-wise, but we were able to get it done. We couldn't have done it without the support of our community. Specifically, I want to talk about our volunteer recruitment campaign that we ran this past fall in partnership with the Niagara Falls Review, helped us reach 45 new mentors to help kids in our community. But what does 300 kids matched in a mentoring relationship mean to our community? It means that there's 300 more children that are more likely to graduate from high school. They're more likely to attend a post-secondary education. They're less likely to abuse alcohol or drugs. They're less likely to bully. They're less likely to rely on social assistance when they grow up. So, in short, they're more likely to reach more of their potential. And that's something that we're very proud of, the work that we do and Big Brothers, Big Sisters agencies across our country. As we reach 100 years next year, we're very proud to say that thousands and thousands of children have benefited from mentoring relationships. Niagara Falls Big Brothers, Big Sisters receives no ongoing government funding, and so it's up to us to fundraise 80% of our operating budget every year. Our Tim Horton's Bowl for Kids' Sake is our most important one, and I'm back again this year to ask for your support. Mayor Diodati, I appreciate you coming and helping us launch regionally a couple of weeks ago in St. Catherine's, and I hope that I can count on members of Council to join us once again this year. The date's February the 25th. I had promised Mayor Diodati I was going to dress according to our theme, which is disco, and I was dressed like that at 6:30, but then I thought you'd plan a joke on me, so I changed back into these clothes, and so here I am. I've brought with me bowling packages, and I hope that, once again, we can count on your support in 2012.
Well, just before we entertain a direction from the Council, just to remind those of you that may not recall, last year, we did put a friendly wager with Mayor Badaway of Port Colborne, that the losing team would have their part of the uniform chosen by the winning team. And while it's, I'm happy to announce that City of Niagara Falls team was victorious. We did have a better score than the mayor and the Council of Port Colborne, and so part of his outfit this year, John, there are going to be pom-poms for his shoes. And we tried to choose a nice color that would go well with Vance's favorite colors. We tried to get the Philadelphia Flyers colors, we just couldn't find them. And I guess a lot of people don't get married with black and white flowers, so we went with peach and white, or black and orange, rather. So we went with peach and white instead. So these here, we'll be sending these to the Councilors in Port Colborne to wear for this year's tournament, and I just want to say thank you to all the Councilors that bowled well, bowled hard, and allowed us to not have to wear these this year.
And so is that same wager applied this year?
Well, I noticed that Mayor Badaway was skirting away from the issue. Skirting? Yep. And part of the deal, too, is we're supposed to be able to pick out his ball, but he didn't want to have anything to do with that. So we'll send him his pom-poms, and we'll see what he does with his, with the friendly wager that we had. But either way, it was definitely for a good cause and well-attended. So do we have a motion or a direction of Council for this year's tournament? Counselor Maves.
Be happy to make the motion that we put a team in for the, this year's tournament.
Okay. Like to make that motion, moved by Counselor Maves, seconded by Counselor Gates, that we put in a team this year. And so first, we'll take the vote. All those in favor? Okay? And just for the team, just to shore up who we'll have again this year, I know Counselor Maves, or Thompson, I believe you showed up last year with your bowling professional gear. So we've got Counselor Thompson, Gates, Maves, I know myself, Counselor Ryanone, and maybe Counselor Peter Angelo, depending on how his bowling lessons go. So, and I think also our city clerk helped us out as well, part of the team, you did?
No, I participate on my own every year and solicit donations from city staff, et cetera, so you're free to donate to me as well.
Are you willing to do a pom-pom bet for next year, Mr. Clerk?
No comment.
All right. So we have a motion. John, thank you so much. Appreciate you coming out, and we look forward to it. And can you give us that date again?
It's Saturday, February the 25th. We'll be in touch just to confirm a bowling time for you guys.
Okay.
Thanks again.
Saturday, February 25th. All right, John, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, we, we do have, first, a planning matter that we need to deal with, first, a regular scheduled planning matter, and then we are going to deal with our matter of our VTS, Niagara Falls Transit Facility. So just beg your indulgence and your patience just a little bit longer. So I'd like to ask the clerk if he'd introduce the next item on the agenda.
Your Worship, a public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit single-detached, semi-detached, and/or-on-street townhouse dwellings on the west side of Willoughby Drive, north of Gunning Drive. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on December 23rd, 2011, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment to participate in any site plan process, if applicable, or preserve their opportunity to appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. I'd now ask Mr. Bolibruck if he'd explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're dealing with AM 2011-014. This picture here is taking, looking east from actually the church parking lot towards Willoughby Drive. So this parcel is currently vacant. It's about half an acre in size. So just moving to the next slide, gives you an idea as to the extent of land uses around the half-acre site. We're dealing with single-detached dwellings to the northwest, and we've got some quadruplexes here, existing single-detached dwellings, and single-detached along Willoughby Drive on the east, and single-detached to the south of the property. So this gives you an idea that there's a real mix of current residential uses. They've been there for quite some time, a number of them. They're older in nature, and we've got some lands to the west that were part of the King George School, I believe, that has been zoned for multiple detached dwellings, and once the market, I think, improves, that will be redeveloped. Some of the background information, what the property owner wishes to do is create four to five single-detached, semi-detached, or on-street townhouses. We'll go through some of the scenarios that were submitted by the proponent. Now, these lots have not been created yet, but they will be created by severance. The current land is zoned institutional, which probably reflects that it was part of the church property, I presume, at one time, many years ago. The applicant is requesting the rezoning to a residential R3 with some certain reductions. This R3 will allow him to develop for single-detached and semi-detached, as well as the townhomes. There will be an adjustment, if these are approved, for the minimum frontage of the single and semi-detached dwelling lots. Now, some history there, in '91, Council did approve an application for rezoning to an R1C to facilitate three single dwellings. This was not carried forward. There is no amending bylaw approved by Council. It was just simply abandoned. More recently, in 2006, the potential purchaser was interested in rezoning the property for 12, a 12-unit apartment complex. We did have a preliminary neighborhood meeting, and the residents voiced some concerns with the nature of this proposal, and there was no formal application submitted. Some of the circulation of comments we did on this application, the region had expressed no objections. The municipal works have indicated that there will be a development agreement to address servicing and grading, and they did note that there is sufficient capacity for the services of the proposed development. As far as the transportation services, they did indicate that Willoughby Drive safety signage has been implemented, or has been erected. They did say that with the assistance to provide some increased sightlines, it was recommended a nine-meter front yard setback be recommended, and we have recommended that in our, our report. The recreation and culture has indicated the cash-in-Lua Parkland dedication is required. We had a neighborhood meeting on December the 8th. We had four people present, including a neighbor to the south. They had some concerns with respect to the multiple-unit dwelling proposal. They preferred single-detached. They also had some concerns with traffic, drainage, and they did note some past history with basement flooding and the capacity of the sewers. Now, those issues will have to be addressed, certainly, as part of the development. This is one of the scenarios they provided. You'll see that we have a single-detached home to the north and two semi-detached, for a total of five dwellings. This was their second proposal of the townhouses, street townhouses, showing five, five units. Now, you notice the, the width of those units are quite, quite a bit wider than the single and the semi-detached. And this is the third proposal, showing the four single-detached dwellings. From a planning analysis, the official plan currently designates the land as residential, permits a wide range of housing. It does meet the density requirements of our policy 1.71 of the official plan. Lands are on a collector road, and we do allow or encourage townhouses of a density of 50 units per hectare, and this development is 26.5 units per hectare. The surrounding lands, fronting on Willoughby Drive, as I mentioned at the beginning, have been developed for a mix of dwelling types, and we feel the proposed dwellings are compatible. The zoning request is from an R, to an R3 zone, which would permit all the uses that are proposed. The R2 zoning permits single-detached and semi-detached and duplexes, and with the R3 zoning, we, it allows the addition of townhouse units. When I mentioned the frontage requirements, they are proposing a reduction to the single-detached of 12 meters to 11.3, and the semi-detached from 18 meters to 16.5. And we mentioned the nine meters of front yard setback, that would be from the property line to the actual front of the building, be increased from six meters to nine. And we think that's still fair enough to create a reasonable building envelope. This gives you an idea as to the nature of the zoning in the area. It's principally R2 to the north and across the street on Willoughby Drive, along here. R1C is, is to the south. And what R1C is, basically, the single detached. So the R2, as I mentioned, allows the singles, semi-detached, and duplexes, and of course, we know that the proponent is asking for the R3 with some special provisions for that location there. So in conclusion, the applicant has requested the flexibility of being able to develop what, I guess he feels will be marketable. He does have the opportunity, if approved, to develop singles, semis, or the on-street townhouses, and as, as mentioned earlier, they will be created by severance through the city's committee of adjustment. We believe it can be supported, complies with the official plan, it's located on a collector road, so it can handle the increased intensification, and the dwelling types are compatible, and the increase in traffic is negligible along Willoughby Drive. There's quite a bit of traffic, not calming issues, but certainly direction signs and painting along the street, and arrows, so it must have been a result of maybe some, some accidents in the past, but the, these corrections probably encouraged the traffic to slow down. The recommendation, I think it does. The Council recommendation is then to approve the zoning bylaw amendment, to change the zoning from institutional to R3 with the reductions in frontage, and also the nine-meter setback, and then to allow either single-detached, semi-detached, or the townhouses. So that completes my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bolibruck. Do we have any questions or comments from Counselor? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, a question through you to Mr. Bolibruck. Can you tell me why we're dealing with a rezoning amendment, and yet they have to go to the committee of adjustment for severance? What am I missing there?
Well, they, there's a couple processes they could, could have approached. They could have gone for the severances and had the severance approvals potentially subject to rezoning, or in this case, they've opted for the zoning first. It's really a preference.
Why wouldn't that all be included in the zoning amendment application?
Because it's a different process. The committee of adjustment has the power to deal with severances, and the Council has the power to deal with zoning changes.
I'm missing something here. I don't know why we have application subdivisions and everything else that come to us on a regular basis, and they're, they're handed through a zoning application.
Yes.
And yet, they don't have to go back to the committee of adjustment. So why is this?
It's just a preference, a preference of the proponent. This could have been even developed potentially as a plan of subdivision.
Yes.
Which could have come through Council. But, you know, there's the opportunity, when you're creating a small number of lots, that they could go through that process.
Is there a financial aspect, or is this less expensive to do it twice rather than once?
I'd have to add up all the costs associated with different applications, but it's.
When you've got two applications rather than one.
Right.
Anyway, I've never seen this before, and of course, I'm new at this, so I, I probably should know, but if they're going to have a plan of subdivision, they can come in. The severance are created. Why they would do it this way, I have no idea.
If they were going through a subdivision, they would be subject to a subdivision agreement. Well, in this case, they're, they're doing a, an agreement as well. It's just probably a little shorter process, maybe, for them, but it's a preference choice.
Okay. We've got Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thanks, Your Worship, and I guess through yourself to Mr. Bolibruck. Mr. Bolibruck, you mentioned, and it mentions here in the report, that on December 8th, there was a, there was a neighborhood open house. You had some people out, some concerns were raised. You talked about a lot of them, but you also mentioned, but didn't really talk about the capacity of sanitary sewers and sewer discharges, and you said that that would have to be taken care of later. I noticed in our handouts as well, there's a, there's a letter that Council received from a resident. I'm just wondering if you can sort of enlighten us on one that would be dealt with, and why staff feel it's not a priority at this point.
Right. They will, the development will be subject to a development agreement, and that will contain a lot of the details of the development. We have comments from municipal works saying there is capacity. So, you know, based on that comment, we have to say that, you know, the development can occur. Does that answer your question?
It does.
Yeah?
Are there any other questions of Council, Mr. Bolibruck? Okay. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting will result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives. Failure to sign the sign-in sheet will result in staff rejecting an appeal as per section 3419 of the Planning Act. Council will now hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this proposed bylaw? Yep, come on, up to the podium, if you would mind, and please state your name and your address for the record.
Mayor, Council. My name is Betty Toth. I'm 82 years old. I've lived next to this property since 1959. It sounds very good, the way the planning man discussed everything. However, he didn't bring up a few points that I think we should know about. They put special signs on the road now, printed the road out, because the traffic is so bad. I've got pictures I would like to pass around. They had to put a steel barricade.
Many, many years ago.
Many years ago. There's a white house that shows, and there's some fourplexes.
It's right here.
There's a house, yeah.
It's a barricade.
They had to put a steel barricade up because that property, the single house next to the fourplexes, had at least, since 1959, 20 cars come up in its yard, at least.
There's 10, about 10 accidents a year there.
It's a very dangerous curve, and my house driveway is right past where that white pole shows. You cannot get in my driveway. You cannot get in it. When you slow down to turn in, people whiz down the curve and nearly rear in me at least four times a week. My daughter's been rear-ended, almost rear-ended three times this week. My property sits up two and a half feet higher than this land. It was like that when we bought it in '59. I have been told by the town planners that that land cannot be raised up to my property. I have pictures of the water since it rained Monday and the snow.
You're passing them around.
The whole, that whole lot where they're going to build those houses was a lake. We have skating every year for the kids in the neighborhood. Just a huge rink. It cannot be raised up, because there's a gentleman here tonight, he lives in the little white house on the other side of this property. All that water would drain down into his house, which is over 100 years old, it has a stone foundation. I've been told that that land cannot be raised up. We wanted to put a garage on one of the lots.
We wanted to buy it.
We couldn't do it, because even with the sump pump running constantly, that garage would have been flooded. We protested when they wanted to build the apartment. It was the same people, farm miners. And I told them all of this then. It's really a swamp. It's a, it should have never been sold.
It's just dangerous. We're afraid that my parents are going to get raw sewage in their basement.
We've had it before.
We've had it from before, just with the lot now. It's such a dangerous corner. I almost, going into their driveway, I have to put my turn signal on at the far property to the north, and I'm still trying to get in, and I almost get rear-ended every night getting into their driveway. I just, I just don't see, there's only one school now, Riverview, children walk along there. I'm scared that someone's going to get really hurt.
No, they say they want to make the road wider, to make the curve better. They're going to take out the sidewalk. They're not going to have Fred J. Rutland next year, they're only going to have Riverview School, which is right two blocks away on Cattell. All, the sidewalk isn't on the other side of the street, it's only on our side of the street. Every child is going to have to walk, and the road's going to be right up to the sidewalk now, or they're going to take out the sidewalk.
And I don't think it's demonstrated enough that there's too many people in a small space already. Across the way, there are four dwelling homes, there's four of those. Then there's only two single houses, and across the street from that is all duplexes. There is no green space. James Cameron used to play in this lot with my brothers, and we were going to call him because he's such a big environmentalist, because we, we keep in touch. And it's just a shame.
Not only that, there's a stop sign down, not one at Gunning, but there's a stop sign at Cattell, which is a half a block past, and there's a little strip mall there. When the crossing guard comes out, because all the kids have to cross Willoughby down at Cattell to go to Riverview School, when the crossing guard stands out there, we're on two bus lines, and when all that traffic comes down south, they, from Cattell, down past this curve, it's traffic. The city bus sat in a line in front of my driveway for four minutes yesterday, because the city bus has to stop for the crossing guard. And then another bus comes down Gunning, which is a half block before Cattell, and that turns onto the street. One of your city planners stopped to try to take this picture, and he told me when we went to the meeting.
On the 8th.
On the 8th, that he could not even slow down his car and park to take a picture because the traffic was so bad. That was one of your planners. So, the apartment was ridiculous.
It's just such a dangerous curve where someone's really going to get hurt.
Are there any other questions for, of Council, for these people? Yes, Counselor Gates?
First of all, thanks for coming, thanks for the pictures as well. Just a question, I don't know if staff would know, on their comments, they said there's been a lot of accidents there. Did we investigate that, that curve? Because it is extremely dangerous here. Would anybody have the number of accidents that we've had in that area?
Through Your Worship, I don't know the number of accidents. I am familiar with the history of that, that curve. There was numerous things done at that location to, to correct issues that are occurring. We widened the, the lines, or created a median in the center of the road to help cars negotiate that curve. My understanding is that it corrected a lot of them, and it's something that we would have to check to verify the number of collisions, but the whole idea of putting in those measures was to mitigate and reduce collision problems. And so that's what, that's what it's there to do and achieve, and also protect if cars are, you know, destined for a property or whatever, there was a guide where I'll put in place, as a result of the problems. So my understanding is they've been mitigated. I would have to check to see if there's been any recurrence of those things.
The cars still come over the line. When they come around the curve, they still come over.
I appreciate that, and I believe your name's Betty?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
You've been there since.
This is my daughter, Jane.
Hi. You've been there since 1959?
Yes.
You've obviously seen a number of accidents there.
Yes, I have. It's not only accidents, they say the services. Do you know, I, we have power surges since we were Chippewa, but worse since we're Niagara Falls. I lived there when it was just Chippewa. And I burnt out eight, I told, I was going to say Mayor Thompson, he was here for the apartment. He was here as mayor when they wanted to build the apartment. And I told him I had just burnt out my seventh refrigerator. We have flooding in our basement. Counselwoman that isn't here anymore, she came and looked at the water in my basement. And it's just, it's just crazy to put that many houses in that little lot, and they want to make it four lots instead of three.
And down the way, there is a development crescent, and the address is 8677 and 8647. Nothing has been, the crescent has been built, but nothing has been put in. And we're just wondering, is this happening all the time? Is this going to keep on happening? People are just going to abandon things? It just, we feel that, if you look on the, there's so many people in this one little area as it goes. I'm, I'm a golfer, and everyone says when you go to Legends, it's just such a.
No, that's a pathway.
It's not very nice looking, let's just put it this way, when you go to. It's not very nice looking, let's just put it this way, when you go to Legends. It's just too many cramped houses into one area.
Yeah, and now they've zoned the schoolyard, and like the planner said, if the economy, you know, gets better, they're going to fill, I don't know how many, they wanted 40 townhouses in the schoolyard?
In the King George.
That's going to be more.
Right behind.
Okay, I appreciate your response. The other thing is that, similar to Vic, but I want to say it again, at this location, what the residents are telling us, there are drainage problems, a history of basement flooding, restrictions on the capacity of the sanitary sewers and sewer discharges. Have you experienced some of those things as living there with?
Yes, it's very definitely.
Now, have you had raw sewage in your basement?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thanks, that's all I.
Remember that when I was a kid.
Well, thanks very much. Just quickly, you look great for 82, by the way.
Just wanted to say too, all that planning and everything, that's Willoughby clay. My father has a garden. If you come look at the garden, anybody's welcome to, it's a fantastic garden. It's just all clay, and it doesn't drain. I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Well, you can see in the pictures, that was just taken Monday. That whole property is just a lake.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here other than the applicant that would like to address the council? Sir, if you'd state your name and your address, please.
My name is Julius Toth, 84, 45, Willoughby Drive.
This is my father, he's 80 years old.
I just want to say that I lived there 53 years, 53 years, and I've kept the one parking lot, or the one lot beside my house. I kept it for 53 years.
Tiny grass.
Before the church was even there. We were there before the church, and the church, I told them when you sell this property, which was zoned for parking, period. This was for parking, period. And I kept this here lot for 53 years, and my neighbor, which is Tim over here, he's been cutting it for about 15 years.
We cut the grass.
Owner hasn't showed up since he bought it. He's from St. Catharines, he don't give a damn what happens to the people around there. We got townhouses all around that curve, and.
There is no townhouses when they bought the property.
This was zoned for resi, this wasn't zoned for residential. This is a parking lot, and it's zoned now for.
Townhouses.
Yeah?
Townhouses.
Yeah, well, they want to zone it for townhouses. To put four townhouses in there around that curve there, somebody's going to get killed.
Yeah.
There's been 400 accidents on this curve since I lived in Chippewa. Thing, Mr. Toth should know that. This is a dangerous corner. There's a curve in that street there, it shouldn't even allow to build on that lot. Not alone buy it, put five townhouses on it, we don't want that. The neighborhood doesn't want it. The people that bought the church, the Koreans, they don't want it. They're flooded right to the parking, right up to the building almost. What the heck is going to happen when the owner doesn't even want to come and check the place out and put drainage in the thing? Where are they going to put these townhouses? On water?
The grass would be over our heads if they didn't take care of it.
No, this is ridiculous. Anybody that's got any brains could look at this here property and say, this shouldn't be allowed. We paid for the curbs and sidewalks, I paid for it, we paid $10,000, this guy didn't pay nothing yet. He hadn't even cut the grass, he hadn't collected the leaves, he just, the leaves are going all over the place.
And he weeds the grass.
Is that the kind of thing, place, or person we want to own this property when he doesn't care for nobody else? This is only greed. He shouldn't even own this property.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Thank you. Is there anyone else here other than the applicant that would like to address the issue here of the zoning bylaw amendment? You can state your name and your address, please.
My name is Jeff Toth. My address is 3089 Usher Street. I live in Chippewa. I lived on that corner for more than 20 years. I can't count the number of accidents I've seen, including head-on collisions with city buses, fatalities. I've seen fatalities as a small child on that corner, where I saw engine blocks and sitting in laps of people that came around that corner, and there's been high collisions. There was barriers put up to mitigate those problems. I've also seen vehicles come over top of that barrier that was installed and land in the neighbor's driveway upside down because they went over top of the barrier that was created. So there was some mitigation for not coming into the guy's driveway, but it ended up being vehicles going actually over top of it. So I've seen, I don't know how many collisions at that when I lived there for more than 20 years. And as a child, we always would skate there because it was always a pond. It's always a pond, and it's always been a pond. So the drainage issues have always been there for as far as when I lived there, and still occur to this day.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Sir, you wanted to come talk to the council as well? You're good, yeah?
Pretty much everything's decided.
Okay. Is there anyone else here other than the applicant that would like to address the bylaw amendment? Okay. Council will now hear from the applicant or his or her representative. Yeah, okay, sir, if you could introduce yourself?
Good evening, your worship, members of City Council. My name is John Perry, and I'm a professional land use planner representing Melanie Vermeer, the owner of the subject lands. We've reviewed the planning report, PD 2012-09, and we support the recommendation. I heard that one of your counselors was asking, why would we apply for a zoning and then a consent as opposed to a consent and then a zoning? The reason that I advise my clients, not just Melanie Vermeer, but other clients, is that if there's an issue with the zoning change, whatever that issue might be, and that you end up under with an appeal and a municipal board hearing, the consent that you applied for is only good for one year. That consent can then lapse. Then you have to reapply and start all over again. So the approach that I take with most applications is to recommend them to go through the rezoning, get the council to accept the land use, and then the committee of adjustment, who's in arms of the council, then can consider the consent application. The Towne of Fort Erie, for example, requires that before, they will accept the consent application. They require that an application be filed and a public hearing held with regard to a rezoning application. From my perspective, the real reason is that a consent application lapses after one year, and if you don't satisfy the condition of the rezoning in that one year, you start all over again. So that was the reason why I recommended my client that they apply for the rezoning, consider the consent first. Now, why is the application for flexible zoning? I think that needs to be explained. It's for the purposes of responding to the market. Single-family semi-attached townhouses are all viable land uses. They're all marketable, but some are a little more attractive than others at certain times. And that's why my client wants and looks for the flexibility. From a planning perspective, townhouses, semi-attached houses, and the single-family houses proposed on this site all fit on the property and represent good land use planning. I also note in the, in your planning report that it indicates that the application's consistent with provincial policy, with the regional policy plan, and the city's official plan. Compliance with these three documents is the basis of good land use planning. And as you all are aware, that if an application is appealed to the municipal board, those are the first three documents that are ever mentioned as being complied with. If you don't, then you have a serious problem. In terms of the comments from the residents, first comment with regard to traffic, this is an existing traffic situation. The approval of this application is not going to aggravate it, not going to change it, you're still going to be stuck with that traffic situation. The curve in the road is a little more than the speed that people do on that road. There are a number of traffic calming techniques that can be used. I'm very familiar with a lot of them. I've had a lot of experience over the years as a professional planner with the Towne of Niagara and Lake, the Towne of Fort Erie, and the City of St. Catharines in recommending traffic calming techniques. There's a lot of them, and that's just as a land use planner. There's a lot of engineers that can tell you all kinds of ways that you can slow traffic down. One of the issues in that area is that it's not fully developed. When it becomes fully developed, you'll find that buildings become a little more of an obstacle to approach. A vacant road with no properties, no buildings, everybody seems to exceed the speed limit because there's nothing around. As buildings get closer to the road and start bringing that visual impact in, you'll find that traffic will slow down. So right now, what you've got in that area is a situation where you've got a sort of almost open and then turn fast, and that is a traffic problem that is existing. So in that sense, that is an existing situation, and I don't disagree with the comments from the residents that the city should have to look at it. You've been working on it, your engineering department, your traffic division has been looking at it, and obviously they seem to need a little more work. The next issue was drainage. There will be a drainage plan required. Properties typically that are developed tend to attract some drainage because they're not properly graded. There will be a drainage plan required as part of the approval of this application as part of the building permit process. My client has no objection to that, and certainly if it cannot be drained, and I don't believe that's, that is the situation at all, then he won't get a building permit. It simply is an issue, is a fact that you have to provide those plans. In terms of the issue with regard to infiltration, I'm not entirely familiar with that situation here. I can tell you that it occurs in all the other municipalities I've worked in. Infiltration into the sewage drainage system is always a problem. It occurs more frequently as drainage systems get old, as sewer systems get older, and you will find backup situations. Your engineering department has indicated that they're providing ways of looking at that and that that's being corrected. This development, in their opinion, has the capacity that it can accommodate the sewage flows, and you, the city, is working on correcting your infiltration problem. In terms of the 12-unit apartment building that was proposed, that was not my client to propose it, it was a person who was prepared to purchase the property, and it was a conditional offer. That project never proceeded because of resident opposition. The property owner, Melanie Vermeer, is not interested in pursuing that at all. We're simply looking at some flexibility for some very low intensity land uses. The last comment by the residents is that my client's paid nothing or will pay nothing for this. He will be subject to development charges, he has to buy into the situation. So that is a condition of building permit issuance. Last comment I want to raise to you is that your planning report indicates that this is currently zoned institutional. And as such, the institutional zone currently permits the following uses. It permits an art gallery or a museum, community building, home for the physically handicapped, home for the mentally retarded, a hospital, a nursing home, place of worship, a private club, a receiving home within the meaning of the Child Welfare Act, a religious institution, a sanatorium, a retirement home, and a YMCA YWJ. Those uses are currently permitted. All he requires is a site plan and a building permit. This application that we're proposing to represent a downzoning of the property from the intensity of the uses that are currently permitted on the site. In conclusion, your worship, and members of council, I'd request that you consider the planning report that's before you this evening and approve the recommendation as put forward by your planning staff.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Perry of council? No questions at all? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Perry. Well, the public meeting with respect to their proposed bylaw amendment is now concluded. Is there a motion from council that we'd like to entertain? Is there any comments? Or, yes, Council Peter Angelo?
I have another question for staff. In the letter that we received, the one that talks about drainage, it says, it's my understanding that during wet events like yesterday, combined sewer overflow continues to be charred or discharged untreated into the river near Sarah Street. Is that, is that true?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't get a copy of the letter, so I can't really comment on it, but did you say as a storm from yesterday? Because we had no flooding events reported.
Yeah, I just, the letter just says that during wet events.
Okay.
Like the one we had yesterday, there continues to be untreated discharge that goes into the Niagara River near Sarah Street. Overflow?
There, well, there were no reported basement floodings. We did not have to initiate any emergency pumping activities yesterday. And just a reminder to council what we're working on, Mr. Perry kind of alluded to it. We have a RAP program which has been employed with some moderate success, particularly in the Chippewa area, to remove wet weather flows from the system. We're also completed an EA and will be commencing construction of a $5 million storage tank near the low lift pump station later on this year, which will deal with the wet weather flows. And when we review applications like this, we approve them on the basis of dry weather flow capacity. So as long as we're not having flooding events during dry weather flows, we approve and recommend that these developments proceed. And there's an analysis exercise that we go through. Now, there are some areas that have, from time to time, some challenges from an operational point of view, perhaps there's grease buildup and debris, and we deal with those issues on an as-needed basis. But generally speaking, in Chippewa, there is not a dry weather flow problem. Our problem has always been during wet weather events. And we have procedures in place, and we are working on long-term plans to rectify those so that when new subdivision applications and infilling developments like this take place, we will not have to stop or defer any development. Counselor?
Thanks, your worship. And I guess through you to Mr. Holman, can you just give me some rationale as to why we would give approval based on dry weather events when we know that there's going to be wet weather events? I mean, like, do we just say that all bets are off when there's wet weather events? We don't, you know, we don't give you any guarantees? I mean, why wouldn't we do it the other way? Why wouldn't we give approval based on, you know, the wet weather events? And then we know that people will be safe for wet weather events and dry weather events? Giving it, giving approval the other way kind of gives a guarantee during dry weather events, but it doesn't give one during wet weather events. It's not very comforting.
I guess we'd be proposing a development freeze in Chippewa? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm asking you why we do it that way. I mean, why don't we guarantee that there's not going to be any problems during dry weather events? But, I mean, you know, we just allow more and more capacity, knowing that during wet weather events, we continue to have to, I guess, take mitigating steps such as pumping overflow into the river.
Well, the wet weather flow events, Mr. Mayor, are a function of the weather conditions that we have no control over. New construction, new development, generally speaking, is airtight, watertight construction that's fully inspected. The problems that we are experiencing on the wet weather side are from our deficient infrastructure that needs to be repaired. on the wet weather side are from our deficient infrastructure that needs to be repaired from time to time. And we've proposed a couple of solutions, and council has supported to fund these capital works, both at the source of the problem and the end of the pipe with the, with the storage facilities. It's one of those situations that you, if you decide you want to resolve the larger issue and ensure that there's no wet weather flooding, no wet weather problems, then I would suggest to you that we look at putting development freezes on those areas that we have chronic problems. But I don't think that has been the intention. In fact, we are trying to encourage better utilization of the flow within the pipes. And then as we, as funds become available, we'll be dealing with the problems that we've had with infiltration and inflow in our system.
Your worship, just a question. I mean, don't we do that with other approvals on other properties? Don't we put holding designations on them? Some type of, you know, sewer or drainage plan is worked out or something that's adequate for the system? Don't we already do that in certain instances? When we identify that there is a deficiency, don't we put a holding designation on certain developments?
Mr. Mayor, I think that would definitely be the case if the property in question was a direct contributor to the problem. But in this case, the impact of adding four or five residential homes on the system is negligible. If it was a large-scale development that would reduce that available capacity in the system or force us to do emergency pumping more frequently, then that would be a consideration that we would have, a requirement we would have made during the commenting process. But in this case, we're talking about four or five lots, and the impact is insignificant.
Okay. Counselor Carrio?
My questions were addressed. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Morocco?
Yes, your worship. I'm not going to support this project, simply because I saw the pictures that the residents have shown. I actually also live in Chippewa. This is a huge area of flooding. There is a major traffic issue there. These all need to be addressed, I think, before any more development happens, and I think that we need to address that first. We need to address the flood and the sewer system and the traffic before we actually add any more residents to that area. So I'm not going to support this amendment.
Thank you. Oh, we've got Counselor Wayne?
Thank you. As the speakers have pointed out, and the letter I brought forward noted, and even staff have noted in the report, Chippewa has been subject to basement flooding and surcharging during intense rainfall events, and as a result, flow restrictions have been imposed. The city has been implementing initiatives to achieve wet water flow reductions, and those initiatives were pretty controversial. I remember in the summer of 2010, there was two public meetings at the fire hall in Chippewa. There were, one was in the afternoon, one was in the evening. Counselor Ryanone and I attended the evening session. Counselor Fisher or Counselor Fisher and Mayor Solsky were also there, and the hall was packed. The residents were absolutely irate about what was going on. And one of the things we heard a call for was the development freeze until the systemic problems were addressed. You know, like, we could say, you know, these are events we don't have any control over, and that's a true statement. However, we know we can anticipate them. We know, and I think it's been the subject of staff reports, that climate change over the, you know, past few decades has resulted in more frequent and more intense rainfall events. We know this stuff's coming, and if we're planning to dry weather flows, then we're just asking for trouble. We're asking for more basement flooding. We're asking for more surcharging. And it sounds to me like we need to do a lot more work in Chippewa before the sewage system there, sanitary and/or storm sewer can handle anything more. And as far as the traffic concerns go, if you look at the Schedule I diagram, this is right on the corner. And I think the residents are absolutely right to suggest that it's very ill-conceived to propose putting another ingress egress point right at that corner, like, right where the curve is really pronounced. If there's that many traffic problems already, you're just avoiding problems by adding yet one more ingress egress point there. So there's no way I can support this either. In fact, I'll make the motion that we deny the application.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Wayne, second by Counselor Ryanone, for denial of the application. Is there any discussion to the motion? Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I'll definitely support the motion. I want to know where we go from here in terms of, I guess, the flow capacity for Chippewa. I'd like to actually attach to the recommendation that council receives some type of report back on the capital funds that staff are proposing be spent out there, and then council can make a more informed decision on whether or not a freezing hole would be placed out there.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion? Yes, Counselor Maves?
Oh, your worship, I'd like to, if it's possible, to get some sort of a traffic report there, too. Possibly would someone have access to accident ratio on that street or in that vicinity? Would that be possible to get a report on that?
Counselor, Mr. Dren.
Through the mayor, yes, we can provide that information to council.
So we've got two friendly amendments to the motion. One from Counselor Peter Angelo regarding the infrastructure investment of municipal works, and one from Counselor Maves regarding the traffic history and mitigating opportunities. Is there any other friendly amendments? No? All right, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Okay, next up, we have our transportation, visitor transportation system, Niagara Falls Transit Facility, and we have a presentation. I'm not sure who's going to lead the presentation. Is it going to be our consultants or Mr. Dren? Okay. If you'd like to maybe introduce our consultants and...
Perhaps I can give a bit of a lead-in with respect to, you know, why we're doing this workshop here today. Council may recall on October 24th, they approved moving forward with the combined facility, approved to the design of a combined facility. And at that meeting, there was a request that they'd be involved in the design or the design process associated with it, and therefore that's what's being presented here tonight. We're going to start off with Manny Nag from IVI Group to step us through the actual design. And council did receive a package late on Friday that showed the drawings of what's being presented here tonight, outlining the detail of it, and provided a covering information with respect that we need a definitive answer tonight to move forward due to the timelines. And we'll get into that in completing the project associated with the funding partners. So we'll get into that tonight as well.
Okay. Okay, that's great. So you're, Mr. Nag?
Ng.
Ng, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, that's great. Welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, members of council. I represent IVI, the architects and engineer that's working on the town of the city of Niagara Falls, on your new bus operating maintenance and storage facility. We were hired about a year ago to start this project. As you know, your current facility has lived beyond its prime life, and we were hired to build you a new facility. Now, to begin a facility like this, we have to do what's called pre-design and programming to actually assess what the city requires. The challenge posed to us at the beginning was that there was a very limited budget. We were asked, based on our firm's extensive experience with various recent projects we've done for numerous municipalities, to try and come up with a very cost-effective model. One that was, I guess, looked at is Grandpa Transit. For members of the audience that are familiar with it, it was a very cost-effective facility. It's up at the Sando Wood Parkway. It's a 200-bus facility. The plans I show you tonight, by and large, is based on that level provision, that quality, the finishes that you'll see in the rendering I show you will require those kinds of expenditures. When we did the programming in spring, we completed it in June sometime, at which time we delivered what we call a definition of project requirement reports to the owner, the city. And in that report, basically, we met with all the stakeholders that were going to be housed in this facility, and we incorporated all their needs. Okay? And based on that report, we did a cost estimate, and as it turned out, that cost estimate came back higher than the budget that the city was willing to entertain at the time. And therefore, we went through a series of what we call value engineering exercise to arrive at the schematic design plan that you see on screen this evening. I'll run through the, some of the numbers of how, what we started with and where we are today as I present the scheme. Generally speaking, the facility you see on site is going to house, originally it was meant to incorporate four departments in the city. There are obviously Niagara Transit in conjunction with the People Mover fleet. So was the parking operation, transportation engineering. So those are the four. Okay. As it turned out, as part of the value engineering, we cut back in this scheme with the lead-in parking operations. They're no longer shown in this schematic design. You still have the three other agencies here. I don't know how much council, I think staff's aware, so do you want me to walk through some of the basics of the schematic design?
Yes, I would think through the basics and to give an understanding.
In a modern bus garage, service, storage, and operating facility...
Excuse me, one second. Counselors, could you turn your mics on? Because they're not able to hear this at home, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Basically, in most of the facilities that we're doing for municipality, the modern garages now have three main components to the facility. Obviously, there's the office and support space areas, what we call office block or administration block. This is the right of the screen here. The dark brown area is what we call the repair garage. That's where all the servicing of the vehicle takes place. And the third component typically is what we call the storage garage, where you store the buses. Now, the issue normally comes up when we are engaged by the client as to should the buses be stored inside or outside. For practical reasons, almost, and I have a list if I'll put on the screen later, we've probably done 10 garages in the past five years. We only know of one project that we've done, and that's in Ottawa, where they've requested for exterior storage facilities. All the other garages that we've completed or that we're receiving RFPs for are under construction, are being tendered. Currently, they're all internally stored. Okay? I think prior to this, the meeting downstairs, everybody was talking about this site, so there is some familiarity with this site. Swayze is shown here, there's Stanley to the right at the top, and then you have the CN right away on my left-hand side here. The way we design bus garages, it's based on a unidirection flow to, so there's no cross-traffic for obvious reasons, for safety and efficiency. Ideally, the flow is counterclockwise because it's easiest for bus drivers to have sightlines. So we've achieved that on this site. There's only one entrance for all the buses on this site, and that's off Stanley. They come in this entrance, and they leave only through one entrance, and that's off Swayze itself. Okay? One additional access onto your site is for passenger cars, and again, we separate that for obvious reasons from the buses. Okay? This facility now, originally when we programmed it, meaning when we met with your stakeholder and we discussed their needs, we had recorded about 155,000 square feet gross floor area that was required. As I said, through a few steps of value engineering, the facility you see on this plane now is down to, I believe, about 82,000 square feet. I need to qualify that. 82,000 represents what's currently an option to store only 12 buses. Oh, my, Carl, sorry. I forgot. Your Go partners. I think everybody, I missed it, sorry. There's one, an agency that came late, I think some of you guys may know, that joined onto this project was Go Transit. So forgot to mention that. Now, part of the condition of them being incorporated in this facility, that they have to have their buses stored internally, there's no question about it. It's their standard requirement. All the garages we do for them in Ontario are internally stored. So when I say the base scheme now, 82,000 square feet, these 12 spaces you see here are their internal storage garage. These we show is the rest of the fleet for the city of Niagara Falls and the People Mover. It's going to be discussed, I believe, tonight whether we have enough resources and budget to consider how much of the storage garage component. Obviously, if you're going to store all your garages on the inside, it would be a footprint covering all the templates of the buses that you see. Okay? But for this option, we weren't sure. We were trying to meet the current budget that the city has. So that's why we've been testing various options where that envelope should go. Okay? It's a 10-service bay garage, which is a good level provision for the number of buses you have here. We have standards that we use based on all the garages that we've done in the past. This garage, by the way, I think, I think most members of the audience may know, also needs to cater for the terminology is out-of-count bus plants.
Probably.
Yeah, there is some servicing capacity here to do those buses. Any question on the site plan? Because I'll just, a quick moment, I'm going to zoom in on the office so everyone kind of knows what an office is about.
Yeah, Counselor Wayne?
Thank you. You mentioned, sir, that for GO, internal storage of their fleet is a standard requirement. I'm just wondering why. What are the advantages to internal storage? They've made it a standard requirement.
It's not just GO, but that GO has pre-published standards because they're building a lot of facilities in southern Ontario, as you know. So it's, they have literally standard specs. They have garages type A, B, C. So, but all, like I said, all the other clients that we've done in Oakville, Sudbury, Winnipeg, Calgary, they're all internally stored. Now, the reason being...
Excuse me, Mr. Dren. Could I get you to come to the microphone? If I could be...
Sorry.
Thank you.
Sisong?
Sisong?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay. It's actually the exception that clients are asking us to do it, storing the bus on the exterior. Now, I've been told, now, we're the engineers, we're not the operators. The reasons that clients like to put the buses on the inside is because of mainly winter. Okay? Startup, my understanding is this drivers go in there, they do their circle checks in the morning to make sure the tire pressures, the lights, windshield wipers are all ready to go and fit operation. The temperature in the storage garages is not typically maintained up to room temperature. It's maintained up to freezing for obvious startup reasons because they're diesel vehicles. As you know, diesel will take a little bit longer to warm up than your gasoline vehicle. When you have a snow storm or any snow incident, you're going to have to be dealing with, like you and I are familiar, we go out in the driveway, we have to scrape our windshields, clear our buses. It takes a bit longer, obviously, with a large bus vehicle. You'll never be able to access the snow up on the roof, so it's, when you pull out, it's whatever's on the roof. Okay? You've got a lot of windows for visibility. You know, typically, we wait for our windows to defog when you leave the driveway to be safe, so you can see out all your blind spots. There's a lot more windows on a bus to deal with. You need a lot more warm-up time to make sure they defog. These are most of the typical reasons why operators that like to improve their service, run on time, reduce their bus drivers' time, apparently as soon as the driver clocks in, he's being paid. So whether he's cleaning off the bus, idling the bus, waiting for it to defog, it's, he's on the clock. So it's all part of efficiency, I would say.
Okay, yeah, and certainly running on time, I think, is important to transit riders and to any transit facility that wants to keep its customers and draw new ones. So, you know, I can appreciate that there is a substantial difference between inside and outside storage in terms of initial lay for capital costs. But it, you know, it's kind of tempting to want to save the money, but it seems to me, from what you're telling me, that it might actually be false economy because you may save a few million in terms of the initial capital build, but over the long run, in terms of... of the initial capital build, but over the long run, in terms of what you're doing to the environment, what you're doing to your service by buses not running on time, and all the extra you're spending on employees having to de-ice windows and get their vehicles ready to head out on the road, it seems that it'll work out. You said it's an exception for...
Well, see, I prepared this list here now, and this was just off the top of my head. The top list, the bullets you see in the top, or in fact, right here, projects, I think 90% or 95% of these are IBI projects we did. Those represent buses that have internal storage garages, and these are all large garages, most of them in 200 bus range. The one you see in the bottom is Ottawa City Transit, OC Transport. They're the only one who've ever asked us to do an external storage facility. There are other facilities out there, not, like, these are in the past five years that we've been involved. For example, TTC has a couple of old facilities that they, in the past, have used the store-outside philosophy. But they've since installed, I'm aware, like, very expensive fluids heating systems to keep the fluid cycled overnight. Those infrastructures are not cheap and they're expensive to maintain, so they're trade-off. Even, even the one in OC Transport, and if you, for the spaces here on the, for City Niagara Falls, if you cannot build all your entire fleet, let's, I was pointing to that site plan, half of your fleet is stored outside, those one, we would provide you with sort of like plugs and ballards because there are apparatuses of bus that can be programmed to warm up and help or mitigate some of those pull-out issues that I was talking about. So there are trade-off costs. You don't just, it's not like, I mean, you do, you do drive by some old facility where school buses are parked, for example, on a gravel lot. There's nothing there, but I don't think that's how you can run transit on a schedule basis and a cost-efficiency basis.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Ing? Yeah, councillor Maves?
Yeah, Mr. Ing, I'm just looking at the diagram, if we can get back to that, in the storage area for our local buses. I'm looking at the repair area, and there seems to be like five buses in the repair area and still plenty of room for lots more buses. And then the other thing is the maintenance area where the bus washes are, where you're coming in. Is there, can that storage, that area be utilized at night or anything? Because you're not going to be washing...
For storage?
You're not going to be washing buses 24 hours a day.
You mean for storage?
Yeah, for storage or for any other means.
What typically happens is, again, don't forget, I'm an architect and we're the engineer, like, the bus operation, people actually are the experts at this, but I've worked in enough garage to know what they do. To answer your question, they typically do not store buses here. They, they do their bus cleaning through the lane actually at nighttime. What they do do is if they have exceeded the storage garage's capacity, I've known operators to run buses in what we call the circulation zone. The last buses, they clear out the fueling lane and through the bus wash, they pull them up here so you can fit in...
So we could get away with a little less storage then of our own, for our own buses?
Yeah.
You still have them indoors?
Yeah, if you, if that's, like, currently, we don't show it that way. Typically, when we design it, the owner asks for, in this case, I think 74 buses. We show the count here, and if the owner says, you know what, I'm tight budget, I'm, please assume we're going to be utilizing the circulation space also to pull in, okay? We can do it that way. And again, like we said, we haven't really locked down where this envelope is.
So we can tighten that down a bit?
A bit, yeah. The other thing is, operators can tell us, the transit agent can tell us, you know what, the garage, the, our fleet is 74, and any given time, we may have some buses on the service space. Again, that's for them to tell us, but you've got to understand, I also been told that depending on the, your routine and your service, some of the garages, we don't run three shifts. So the maintenance repair garage, you can't use or store because they got three shifts of mechanic coming in to deal with the repair schedule, okay?
Now, when you, when you, when you did this design, are we looking at the Rolls-Royce of bus terminals, or is this?
No.
Is this the very best, or...
See, as a matter of fact, it's ironic, the OC Transport facility is the most costly, although it's stored outside. But obviously, that's not where the money went. There's other systems. System-wise and provision-wise, that's what I alluded to in the beginning, we follow the Brampton transit model for you who may have visited.
Can we get you up at the mic again, sorry to keep, I can give you a pointer if you like one, if you...
Yeah, I didn't bring my...
We've got one for you.
My lightsaber today.
Lightsaber.
So this is, this would be a middle-of-the-road design?
Well, Brampton is one of our most cost-effective one. Middle-of-the-road, I would say, is Oakville Transit, what we just completed. And we, in talking with our clients here at City Niagara Falls, we said, you know what, you don't need to get to that level for service. They had some nice perks, they were LEED Silver certified, they had the 2008 stimulus fund, so they wanted to use some of that. You didn't, for example, you didn't get everything here that we were able to provide for Oakville.
Well, I know that we need an excellent service area because we do service out-of-town buses as well, and I'm not sure whether Mr. Ing wishes to enhance that service in the future or bring back a lot of that business.
If I can make a comment, just on what Manny is saying, Mr. Ing is saying, is that this is not the Cadillac. When we followed Brampton, we followed a low-cost solution because what we did as part of this process, we went out to and visited a few facilities. And IBI, Mr. Ing took us to one that was very expensive, the Cadillac, and took us to Brampton. We didn't notice the difference. We didn't notice the difference, and we said, we want that one. So, so we've always been working off of the Brampton model. With respect to, I guess, some of the slides, just to let you know, you know, it's our intention, you know, one of the things we have to look at is our, you know, when you compare operation sizes and so forth, we're essentially going to double the size of the operation. In other words, the servicing needs, because we're going to look after Niagara Falls Transit, of course, the VTS system, the regional transit buses, Go Transit, charter and out-of-town buses. And when we were full, you know, in Full Speed Ahead with Coach Canada, we were running a 24-hour shift. We're not doing that right now. So the expectation is, is that we want to recapture some of those opportunities, so we may be doing that. What's also being presented tonight, and perhaps I should have let in with this, is we're looking at two options here. We're looking at an option, which is a base option, that just provides storage for Go at their request, and an option too, which is 50% storage. So we're not, we're not going for the 100%. We're looking at trying to utilize some of the spaces that you've identified with respect to servicing lanes and all of that, how can we best meet the needs? We also recognize the seasonality of what we're looking at, and there's opportunities to possibly park some buses outside that are not going to be used during the wintertime. So on that basis, we went forward with a 50% option as, as sort of the upper limit, and the base option being no storage. But as, as Mr. Ing had pointed out, there's a lot of cost implications, as well as councillor Wing had pointed out, there's a lot, a lot of cost implications without outdoor storage if it's your daily route. It's not like, you know, where a snowplow goes out, it goes out when it's ready to go. We have routes that we have to meet times. If we're not out there at 6:45 in the morning, you have 10 people waiting at a stop going, where's the bus? So all those implications are going to be discussed this evening.
The other thing is too, I was concerned about, should we have a large amount of our tour buses? Have we got lots of space around our parking area for, for tour buses that should come in? Say we wash them or refuel them or whatever we do, is there, is there an area for that in this design?
The intent is to provide for that, to have that provision. When I say it's doubling in size, if you see the top of the, that brown area, it shows five bays. That's essentially what we have today, plus one of the service lanes on the right of that. We essentially have that. So all we're adding is another service lane and areas to accommodate. Remember, we have 60-foot articulated buses now. We have to be able to service them, and those four bays that are shown at the bottom, and they're, they're sort of have the yellow highlights, maybe Manny can point them out.
Yeah, in addition, Carl, it's probably easier to answer, yes, some of the asphalt paving here, these are only single circulation because this was unidirection. Again, it's operationally dependent, but you can find spaces in your secured yard where these third-party buses can, can park and lay by.
And I hope that our bus washing service is going to be the best there is. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Someone else had a question. Okay, are you still presenting, Mr. Ing?
Yeah, I have a drawing, if anybody's interested in looking at the sort of office block layout.
Yeah, well, show it up.
Okay, just, the basic components, I've shown in the office, obviously, I won't go through the detail. If you recall the site plan, this is Stanley out here to the right. This entrance is the public entrance. This block here, you can see it's all sort of secured with just this corridor, separated with these two access doors. That's essentially the transit administration offices in conjunction with the transportation engineering department here. Over here is a small lunchroom for the bus operators and then their dispatch functions. That's a supervisor, they have a meeting discussion room here, and these are where all the dispatch functions take place. The operator's locker, half-height lockers and their washrooms are here. The fare collection, the vault room where the revenue is handled, is at this location. And these, this is a large training room that can be divided into two for bus drivers and shared with the mechanics. All the mechanics spaces, washrooms, lockers, and amenity are backed out in the garage, okay? Oh, and this is the employee-only entrance to the south, okay? Any questions?
Any questions of council? Yeah, councillor Kerrio.
Thank you, your worship. On the office portion of the construction, what's the breakdown of the cost between the office building, the yellow, and the other part of the building? What's the breakdown?
Right now, they, we've only done a Class C, so they've done it based on element, what they call elemental costing. That means they break it down for structure, for HVAC, for electrical. They, we're going to do a Class B and a Class A. We won't actually be able to get to square footage cost for just the office component probably until we get to Class B. But we, from previous project, have rough benchmarks, we know. Obviously, the bus garage, the storage garage is the cheapest component in these facilities. The two expensive components are the offices because of the finishes and the partitions and the sanitary provisions. The repair garage is obviously all the service equipment for the buses.
I'd be interested in the breakdown between the office and the storage.
We can get you that and forward it to you, Carl. But it won't be a cost estimate on this, but from, from benchmarks.
Councillor Maves?
Yeah, just looking again at the diagram too, I'm just wondering, are we going to be taking some other staff from City Hall and Niagara Transit? Are they all, are, are going to be people from City Hall going over there as well? Because I'm looking at some of the functions that are in here, and like, for instance, I think there's school coordinating and things like that and some other offices. Will, will any of the staff from City Hall be going over to this building?
Actually, the, the traffic engineering component is currently housed at the McBain Center. That was a temporary step until this building was built, and the whole idea was to move them into this building. The reasoning behind it is staffing efficiencies, sharing staff, rather than hiring additional staff. The whole idea is to try and share some, some staffing. The other thing too is traffic engineering is also responsible for the signing that you see on the streets. They're also, they are involved with that, and because the service center is across the street, the signing component is there, so the field staff are there. So it was, it was really a strategic move to bring them there.
Okay, now, I noticed also we have caravan dispatch. Now, they've normally been dispatched out of the, is it the Glenholm Avenue, the St. John Ambulance Building? Are they moving in with you, or is that...
The intent is to move them there, that's all. Again, I was going to get into that a little bit later on, but as part of the transit business plan was to, to bring them under one roof and house that style of operation under one roof.
Yeah, the other thing is too, I'm just wondering to him, I'm looking at a, a large lunchroom and a training room. Could that not be combined into one large room? I'm, I mean, you could do your training on alternate hours away from the, the various lunch hours. Could that not be coordinated and probably could use a little less space? Is that possible?
Yeah, what, we talked about that, just, just to see how we pared down from last time we met with council. When we looked at this, there was a washroom up front in, where the administration offices were, and that was removed. There was sort of a set of washrooms. There was a set of washrooms, so what we did is combine the two with the front and the back and said, you don't really need that. The other thing that we're looking at is the lunchroom is to house not only our staff, and because of the changing hours, you really can't kick them out. I mean, they work, they work different hours than, say, you know, your standard shifts. But we also intend to bring Go operators or within that lunchroom as well, and they operate different hours. So we did look at that efficiency, but it really didn't surface, and the need for training, you know, was identified again in the, in the IBI report and on a yearly, on a yearly basis, that there's a lot of things happening with the AODA and, and driver training requirements that are going to be ongoing. The one good thing about that, about that training room is that when it's not used for transit, it's open to any, any department or division in the city as a training sort of building. So we did look at that, but you need the lunchroom full-time.
Yeah, then again, though, you got the training room, then I see a conference room as well. Could that not be combined? Just trying to narrow things down to make it...
We've had this question, Carl, almost every transit project, and then, right now on this, and they always end up having the training and the lunchroom. The reason, and the typical answer is this, if you look at the lunchroom, which is here, now, we call it a lunchroom, but I don't know if you guys are filming here, it's really a congregation area for all the bus drivers who come on and off shift. There's a signup room, so when they're looking at picking their shifts and routes and that, anytime you come in here during the pull-out peaks and the pulling peaks, there's a whole bunch of drivers here. They may be eating lunch or snacking in, in between times, but my understanding is not just used as a lunchroom from 11:30 to 1 o'clock. The trouble with combining them is, if this is crowded or milled about during the day with bus operators, we've been told that in new transit facilities, that the need for training, if anything, because of the technology and the buses, has been ever increasing. Now, this is combined for not only drivers, but it's supposed to be for your mechanics, and we've been told that the mechanics are other guys that need a lot more training because of all the systems. So based on the other projects such as Brampton, like I said, we use as a model, to have the level of, or the amount of training room with that lunchroom at the top corner is not excessive in comparison to the other projects.
Okay, can I go back to that other drawing again because I'm a little confused about the public entrance? Just want to clarify something, the large drawing, that one there. Yeah, I've got the, the buses coming in on Stanley.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the, the public is going to come in, and their driveway is going to be off Swayze, and so that'll get them to the front door.
That's right. The public, if you were a visitor...
You're coming in there.
Yeah, you would have visitor parking.
And then your front door is right there.
And the, the sidewalk's here, and then your front door is here.
Okay, great. No, I was a little confused when I first saw it. I thought that it was the same thing with the, with the buses coming in, but I see they come in from Swayze Drive, so that's good. Thanks very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Any other questions right now? Okay, did you want to continue?
Um, oh, I have the pretty pictures. Okay, this is an aerial view, just to give you a rough idea of the design currently. This is obviously Stanley, and that's Swayze there, okay? Okay, this is a view, looking at it if you're from the southeast corner of the car park. Okay, this is a view, looking at it if you're from the southeast corner of the car park. And that's the office block there, and that's the repair garage there. That's from the northeast corner. You're standing on Stanley. This is the pull-in entrance for the buses entering the site. These are the doors going into the storage garage, and that's the office block there. That's a closer view of the same, from the same angle. Okay, and that's just the same view we looked at. Any questions? Oh, the materials, again, it was, it's quite austere, like, if you look at our higher-end garage, it's usually precast, like Go Transit. We're using insulated metal panel here as Brampton did. It's quite a difference in cost.
Do you do any LEEDs or any green initiatives, you know, like the water catchment roofs and things like that in this design?
Yeah, so this project, what we were tasked to do is, wasn't required to be LEED certified, meaning, we don't go through all the documentation paperwork, but we were required as a consultant to design to the principal and target LEED silver. So, at the beginning of the project, when we did the programming, it's in our report, where we, for you, for those of you who are familiar with the LEED program, we do a checklist, and I think for LEED silver, you currently need now 50-something to 60 credits with the Green Building Council to get LEED silver. On this one, long story short, we basically have checked all the provisions, items that we're going to do that are sustainable, and it is targeted for a silver. So, the items you mentioned, rainwater harvesting is in this. It's, and that's not a huge, we've obviously picked the ones that are not huge cost premiums that give you the biggest bang for the buck. And rainwater harvest is not huge, it's a plastic tank, and for, it's a no-brainer for a bus facility because you actually need that water, use that water for the bus wash.
That's great, that's great. Any other questions, Mr. Ring? Yeah, Counselor Mase?
Just got one more, just wondering where the fuel tanks and whatnot are going to be for the diesel fuel and whatnot. Where would they be located?
I'll show you in the site plan. Tank farm is here, so the diesel fuel and all the fluid tanks will be here. We put them there, obviously, it's away from the public side, and there's enough asphalt paving area there for the delivery trucks to be delivering during the day hours without interfering with the buses circulating.
Okay. Can you tell who spent 20 years on the Transit Commission here? Got all the transit issues. Okay. All right, is there other aspects to the presentation, or, I'm not sure. Yes, Mr. Drin?
Yes, we have a bit of a PowerPoint, and it's to provide, I guess, information to council with regards to where we are today, the fact that the size of the operation is more than doubling. And we pared down the building as much as possible to bring us within the guidelines that council has given it to us. In other words, not a Cadillac, but be functional and be, be able to operate. And so, that's what we want to really go over with you this evening.
Okay.
So, perhaps I can have Dean pull up that PowerPoint?
Well, we don't actually have the PowerPoint unless we switch another computer. We are handing you out hard copies, though, so I would suggest, if it's not too onerous that you go through the hard copy.
The non-tech method.
After this, we're going back to Monday nights.
What I could do is, if you flip the page through, well, it's the third slide, it's called Transit Business Plan Facts, and I'll step you through. And I think we all know that the current facility and site that we're currently on are unable to adequately meet our needs if we combine it with the BTS. The second part, or the next points are related to the transit business plan, and they're facts. The facts are that currently today as it exists, if BTS didn't exist today, we would need to invest about $4 million into the existing building just to correct some of the deficiencies that, and the structural design deficiencies that exist today. There are some real issues there. I don't want to get into them. I can if you want, but that's what we'd have to do today. So, we'd have to commit to at least $4 million. Then, moving forward, as a council, we would, the next item is, again, identifying the transit business plan, is that the construction of new facilities. So, in today's dollars, I don't know if you recall, this, this study was done in 2009, in today's dollars, we would have to spend $14 million to construct new facilities if we're doing it on our own, without what we have here today. And again, the fact that I've been stating all the way along is our operation now includes, or is going to include, ourselves, the BTS system, regional transit, Go Transit, and charter and out-of-town bus servicing. And, and, you know, the key component to this is, is your garage, which unfortunately, or fortunately, is your most expensive part of the equation. So, we need to make sure that we at least maintain that to have the ability to service those needs. And there's two more items on there, option one and option two, which I mentioned earlier, is that, you know, there's really two options. One is, is a base option that includes go storage only, and it equates to about $2.2 million. And option two, which is 50% storage at $4.6 million. And what I mean is, that is money that council would have to provide to this project to make, to make sure it happens. What I could do is turn this over now to Dave Stewart, just to bring you up to speed on some of the fact. This is really talking about the issue of outdoor storage versus indoor storage, and what we're doing with the storage, what we made decisions on, and what could, what we need to do to handle our, the operation that's going to be before us once the BTS kicks in.
Now, thanks, Carl. Through you, Mayor DiDaddi. If you go to the next slide, which is listed as transit operational facts, I'll try to move this quite quickly because some of the points Roarrie alluded to, but as Manny alluded to, most transit facilities built today, virtually 99% of them have indoor storage. And there's many reasons for that. We currently have roughly 80% of our fleet stored indoor. We have indoor storage for 21 buses. We currently have 26. It gives you about 81% roughly we store indoor. The caravans have block heaters. We store those seven buses outdoor. But what people need to realize about these big 40-foot buses is they're kind of finicky creatures. There's a lot of little micro switches on them on the doors, so if someone gets out a door and it stops halfway and catches their arm or leg, it releases automatically. There's the ramps at the front doors that all have micro switches to activate them and deactivate them. Every single one of those 40-foot buses rides on a total system of air. So, the suspension is air, the air tanks are all filled with obviously air, the lines are all air-driven, the wiper blades are air-driven, the doors are air-driven. Everything on those buses is air-driven. So, when they're out in the day, and they're running along, and they're warm, they operate fine. When they sit in the evening and there's any air in those lines that has moisture in it, they can freeze up, which means that the airlines freeze up, the tanks freeze up, nothing on those buses operates. We had a situation last week on a cold snap where we had a bus literally seize up going down Bridge Street. The brakes seized up. We had to literally get the mechanics out there and back the bus up Bridge Street to get it back to the garage to de-thot and work on the brakes. So, they're very finicky. So, when it's cold out and the systems freeze, they will not operate. It creates a real problem for us. We actually had two buses at the front of the line, indoor, and one at the back line, closest to the outdoors doors, that froze. So, we had buses parked in between there, we couldn't mobilize. We had to thaw out the other two buses, get them going to access the middle bus. So, they're quite finicky creatures, and that's why the majority of registries stores those buses inside. The other thing is idling time. If we, buses parked outside and they have to idle them, the three-minute anti-idling policy will be very difficult for us to achieve. We've got operators that show up and sign in at 6:30, they have to be saved, main and ferry by 6:45. If we've got issues with getting those buses going, and the operators have to clean them off, or they can't air them up sufficiently in time to get the systems working to be safe to operate for our customers, it could be a real challenge for us to meet our service needs. If you look at outdoor storage, in the case of like Ottawa, outdoor storage usually encompasses an area that's 20% larger, because you have these giant gantry systems that pump out these fluids, this warm glycol fluid that has to circulate through the bus to keep it warm so that it can start up next morning and leave on time. So, they take a larger area, you've got idling systems that can go for quite a period of time. We're pretty close to residential area. So, for idling buses for an extended period of time, that could prove to be a challenge. I mean, it's obviously going to enhance our carbon footprint. So, there are challenges there. If the buses don't start, you've got to get our battery backup systems in between these laneways, so they have to be cleared out to get at the battery packs. And obviously, batteries don't last as long when they're outside as well. They're really challenged. So, we'll be going through some expensive batteries. And again, when I talk about the ramp systems at the front door for accessible ramps, they're low to the ground. If they seize up and freeze, it creates a real problem for us when they're in service. So, there are some significant challenges we face. Operationally, and the costs associated with that, sometimes difficult to quantify because so few people in our industry do it. But, you know, we do know that those that have done it, some have gone back, the ones that have done in Ottawa, I can't really explain why they've done it, you know? We've talked to them. Bob Goody is a former Ottawa OC Transo employee and got some information today, but it looked like it was more of a pilot project to see if they found a way to make it work. But, again, it's pretty rare industry for people to go that way for a number of reasons. So, that's kind of the, the history of indoor storage, that's where our industry has gone that way, and that's why we're, you know, proposing to go in that manner. We know that we can cut it down a little bit, as Counselor Mase has alluded to. We can move some buses indoor if we know there's going to be a significant snowfall or an ice storm, we can move buses into the maintenance area. Again, it's a little, that's a unique situation. If we're going to be, like, we currently operate 21 hours a day in our maintenance area, so we're constantly moving buses around, whether it's wiper blades or brakes that are working on it, we're forever moving them around and getting them back into the storage area currently to be ready for the next day and in the lineup. So, you'd be moving a lot more buses around, creates a bit of a safety issue, but it can be done. We know that the BTS is a seasonal nature animal, so that at different times of the year, as Carl had mentioned, we can park buses outside. So, we can work with that as well. So, we know we don't need, you know, the Cadillac, i.e. 100% indoor storage for our fleet. We know we can find a lesser level of indoor storage, but as I've stated, it certainly is the preferred way to store these buses. They're very expensive pieces of equipment, they're $450,000 and beyond. The Arctic buses are over $800,000. And not only in the wintertime, some people forget, in the summer, if they're out there at 40 degrees Celsius, sitting on tarmac for extended periods of time, all these buses now, they don't really have metal cladding on the side, it's all polymers, it's all fiberglass and, and plastic componentry, it's all brought together through adhesives. You know, we know that the UV light pounding on buses outdoor all day long is going to lessen their lifespan as well. So, that is another thing that we're trying to be mindful of. When they're inside, they're protected from the elements, they're protected from less vandalism, they're protected from other issues that we face, and the bus will have an extended lifespan. There's just no two ways about it.
Okay. Were you going to continue through the, or just that one aspect?
There's that one aspect, and perhaps we want to look at the financial facts associated with what we're looking at tonight. And I would ask Todd Harrison, our Director of Finance, to maybe, perhaps go through, what is the eighth slide in the presentation, second last slide, just to talk a little bit about, about the financial facts.
One of the, the issues from the outset of this project was to consolidate both the new initiatives, meaning the BTS, the IMT, which is now new with our traditional fleet, and by having one facility, there's operational efficiencies to having that. If we don't relocate into one facility, then you'll be operating two, two maintenance bays, which obviously will have certainly a negative impact. The second item is, the current building that we're in has significant future costs that have been identified. It's been previously reported as to what that anticipated cost would be. This is an opportunity for the city to leverage monies received for the BTS project to actually avoid future expenses, operational expenses, whether it be repairs or capital reinvestments that would be needed for that location. The proposal, you know, obviously, to move to one facility will continue to allow us to, to provide the coach service that we've done in the past, and as Counselor Mase has suggested, perhaps to generate additional revenues. And that, that has been historically a benefit to the municipality by providing it some sort of a, operating efficiencies for our current fleet. And, you know, again, one of the things that's happening right now, and we're going to talk about that as we move through the budget process, is that the borrowing rates that exist today are significantly low by historical standards. There is an opportunity, we are going to be moving forward with a debt management plan. Again, prior to the culmination of the BTS project and the funding arrangements with our partners, we were looking at a capital reinvestment in that property. And again, this is an opportunity maybe to take, take advantage of those low interest rates to be able to reinvest for our transit operations for the future. So, those are just a few of the, the financial efficiencies of facts, facts of this, of this operation and potential consolidation of operations.
Thank you. Are there any questions of, yet, Counselor Mase?
I'm just wondering, to offset some of the costs, any idea how much money we can get for the sale of the old bus facility? Hope it's more than five bucks.
We've, we made, as you may recall, we had another capital project that we had anticipated significant returns on the decommissioning and sale of our previous property. So, again, I would be hesitant to really suggest I know what the value of that property is. It's been operated as a garage for the last number of years. For us to decommission it would be something I can't predict. I would say, unlike perhaps our funding arrangement when we looked at the proposal for the Gale Center, we really don't want to be looking at tying this project to the potential proceeds of decommissioning the, the transit, transit building, because again, it's unpredictable what we'd get.
Yeah, perhaps Mr. Drin can enlighten me too. Any of the equipment or anything that can be retrofitted to the new facility? Do we have to buy all brand-new?
Much of the equipment will be utilized, or that's going to be purchased, is going to be done through the BTS project, and therefore, there'll be sharing of that equipment. In fact, in order to handle the articulated, between the time the building gets built and, and this building, we're going to be purchasing hoists that are going to go into the new building. And, you know, equipment, again, you know, a lot of tools that can be.
If some of the hoists are portable, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, they're going to be moved over. We're not going to replace them with all the new equipment.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? Yet, Counselor Gates?
Yeah, just on the transit business plan facts that the presenter put, put forward, and talking about outside storage. If you take a look at the BTS buses, I believe most of them are going to be brand-new. And they're obviously, in the summer, they're going to be used quite a bit, but storing them in the winter, because that seems to be one of the issues here, storing those buses outside in the winter shouldn't be that much of a problem, because I'm predicting that we're not going to use those buses that much in the winter compared to the summer. Obviously, tourists, there's lots of tourists between, you know, May until end of September, but certainly it goes down substantially in the winter months. So, you could really store those buses outside, and I don't think some of the problems that you've raised here today would be an issue. Maybe you can correct me on that, but that's kind of how I see it. I think that's what you had said, so.
Mr. Carl?
Yeah, if I can answer that, I think the basis, if you turn to the last page, I mean, we're, we're looking at a 50% storage, and we're basing it on that fact. We're, we're saying, we don't need to put 100% in because, because during the wintertime, the seasonality, there's going to be a number of buses that are going to be parked, and we'll, we'll make all attempts to protect those, you know, from the winter weather. You know, you shrink wrap boats, why can't you shrink wrap a bus? You know, so, if, if we can do it, that's why we're suggesting that we can get away with 50%. We've looked at that, and we've reduced the project as, as much as we can to do that. So, we're not saying we need 100% storage because everyone else has it. We're saying, we reduce it down to 50, recognizing that there might be some opportunities within the service area to, to put some of the buses in there, so that when, when we're ready to go on our peak times with all the buses going out in the morning, we can at least handle those. And, and I think that's why we're recommending the 50%.
All right, thank you. Okay, and Counselor Thompson?
Just regarding the, the usage of the buses, first of all, in the summertime, they're going to be very active and very busy. However, in the wintertime, we are going to have a busy convention center, and we'll have to be, that's when the convention business is in the winter. have to be, that's when the convention business is in the wintertime, not in the summertime. So that's the objective, to use them in the summertime for the tourism groups. In the wintertime, there's certainly going to be a need for some of those buses to service the convention center, to get people out of there quickly and back to their hotels. So it doesn't always work that way.
Okay. Counselor Carrio?
Thank you, Your Worship. On the last page, on the estimated project costs, where you have, is there a mistake on the architectural design, contract administration, project management? Is that, are those numbers right? Almost $2 million in architectural costs and $1,529,243,000?
Yeah, we, yes, those-
Those are the estimates, or are those actual prices?
No, that's through a tendered process. That was through the RFP process when IBI was hired.
And at this stage of the game, how much of that money have we spent to get to where we are today?
Um.
Above $400,000.
Above $400,000. To get to this? We spent $400,000. So is it too late to look at taking the $400,000, taking the idea that we have, and getting a design build? Calling an RFP and getting a design build, including architectural, to see what type of a cost someone might propose that they would provide this facility for, all in? Is it too late to do that?
Who wants to answer that with Dave?
It's premature to do that. I don't think that you have enough information that you could go to a design build. You'd have to spend, at least go to more design and produce an RFP package, which would be quite costly. And I don't see the advantage in the design build here.
Oh, I'm sure you don't. But could we not put on an RFP based on what we say we want to do? We say we want to house so many buses. We say we need so much office space. We say we need to accommodate what you've said we need to accommodate, and basically put a package together and call an RFP to see what type of prices we may get as opposed to this? Because I'm not sure there's a will among council to spend much more money than we have.
Yes, you could, you could take that approach, but when we're dealing with design bill with the convention center and getting input, you have to be, your design almost has to be complete, because if you don't, you run into a problem with the change orders. We spoke with a couple of different municipalities that went through a design bill, but they did that type of a process, and they ran into some significant cost changes, like once they're into construction, it wasn't exactly what the client wanted, and then you incur heavy costs. And that's something that really worried us with the convention center, and we wanted to get to some really strict design in terms of what we wanted. And then you might get some tweaks, but you really have to go through that process of getting that design completed. So you eliminate that possibility.
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship, and I can't disagree with Counselor Carrio at all. I think this is the point that we were trying to make the other day. I mean, you know, if I compare it to house shopping, and, you know, and I go out and I say to a builder, I want a house that has two bathrooms, three bedrooms, one living room, one kitchen, and, you know, and he gives me a price of a house based on the facts that I give him. If I do that as opposed to designing my own house, going to an architect first and having an architect design that house, and then taking that plan and bringing it to a builder, I know which one is going to be more expensive. And that's the point that we were trying to get at the other day. I mean, I just find it very hard to believe. We have, we have $21.5 million, and we're being told in both instances here. And then we're also being told tonight that we need an absolute decision tonight, which I don't really particularly like. There was nothing in our package that says that we need a decision tonight, and then all of a sudden, we come, and on the PowerPoint presentation, the very first slide says, "Investment commitment is required this evening in order to meet deadline." Nothing in our council package about that, but then we get here and it says that. But going back to the design build, Your Worship, I mean, I think if you use the analogy of shopping for a home, you can see the benefit in what Counselor Carrio and I are trying to say. I think if you put the requirements out there, you're going to get prices back better less than if you go and you design the actual building first and then go out and try to build that building. That's my personal belief, and I also believe that $21.5 million is enough to build it.
Thank you. We've got a response, yes, Mr. Ray?
If you could shed some light on, because we do a lot of decision with the owner, and we consult with a lot of owners on all the approaches we do on delivery methods. And frankly, we do design build, too. So either way, I can work for the contractor, or I can work for the owner. What I, from what I heard, that was exchange here, I just want to clarify for the city sake. When you do design build, people have the perception it comes in cheaper, and generally it does, for the reason you talked about, because when you hand it over to a contractor, he knows where to cut the cost, bar none, okay? But when he cuts the cost, he gets it from somewhere, okay? As long as the owner knows and he's aware of it. So as you said in the example of your home, if you say, I want one bathroom, three bedroom, two car garage, I don't give a darn, you know, some of the details, what finishes or whatever, or you can specify. The point is, what Dave was saying, if you put a design build, you do still need to go beyond this. You've got to put a package actually to protect what performance level you want to hold the design builder to. Once you've drawn that document, that's your threshold, by contract, the design builder's free then to give you the cheapest building to meet those. And that's, that's why a design build was created. The other is for scheduling, but it doesn't apply here. Okay, so just be aware of that. We found that design build usually works best when you're trying to deliver a project where it's not so user concerned about design, layout, systems, specifications, so forth. Like if you're doing a bridge, a highway, industrial building, I want 100,000 square feet, I want a highway, so give me a price for so many kilometers. We do a lot of those, we do roads as well. So facilities, I'm starting to see some clients, one, bus garage facility wanting to do design build, but as long as they're aware of the trade-offs, okay? Oh, it doesn't, I just also understand, excuse me, that both processes, in fact, are competitive, and that's the key. You need competitive bidding, okay? So if we, so look, IBI designed this. If a contractor came to me with an RFP from Niagara Falls and said they wanted 74 buses, we also have to design to the cheapest by the contractor. But again, I look at the spec, and we try to go rock bottom on the spec. In this case, I work with the owners here and say, what is your minimum? So IBI, the designers are virtually the same, whether I work for a contractor, IBI does it for Ellisstone or PCL, or I could work for Brampton, or I could work for Niagara Falls. In the end, it's the bidding process, if it's competitive, that's going to yield you the best price for the best specification that the owner puts out, okay?
Thank you. Counselor Carrio?
But I guess you don't get the benefit then of the contractor, because the contractor, I think, you're right, knows how to save money the best. And I guess if you go to design build, he still has to provide the best building, because you're going to pick. You're going to pick which contractor, which design build gives you the best value for the dollar. You're not going to pick the guy that just puts together a package and gives you the cheapest building. He has to win the bid. That usually means giving you the best building for the best dollar, not necessarily the cheapest building, or the building that cut off the cost. He still has to give you, he still has to win.
Give you the best building to meet spec. Anything above that is a change order. Actually, design build-
Could you come to the mic, please? Sorry, just so, people at home are watching you, too.
Oh, that's fine. Actually, it doesn't matter if it's design build or design bid build. Contractors are looking for projects where there are gaps in the specifications, and that's what they're honing in on. So whether it's design bid build, design build, when they look at the specification, obviously, they want to win the job, and low bid normally wins. They're going to go right to the bare bones on the specification. They're not going to, like, when you say, well, we don't get the benefit of the contractor to give you better value. It's kind of an axiom. I don't, I like to think they're there to watch out for the owner, but I think it's just, and I have nothing against contractors, but it's just their, their business model. They're there to win the bid, to be the low bid, and you can't get the job if you're not the low bid. But you can't give the house away. You've got to make a profit somewhere, okay? So the only way to compete with your competitors, you've got to shave it right down to whatever the spec says.
You're assuming that, you're assuming that the total, whether you get the job or not, is completely awarded by the price. Usually, you would do it, you would do it by, what kind of building you're getting would have some points and some weight, and the price would have some points and some weight. You're assuming that you would just get the job if you absolutely were the cheapest price. I'm not assuming that you would get, you would get it based strictly on the cheapest. You'd have to have the best bid.
Then what Counselor is talking about is evaluation process. You can elevate the evaluation process for design bid build or design build, meaning it's not price driven. You can determine the evaluation matrix and the weight. For those who have experienced delivering those projects, it isn't that easy and clean cut, because there's a lot of, actually, a lot of municipalities worry about not sometimes awarding to the low bid, because you have to be very careful how you've crafted your evaluation matrix, how transparent you are.
I understand. But I guess we're just struggling when we have $21 million, and we're all assuming that $21 million would build us the facility, and we're looking at it black and white, it won't. And we're faced with either spending $5 million on top of the money that we have, or $2 million, or whatever. I guess we're just struggling to try and find a way how we could get what we need without dipping into the taxpayers' pockets, you know? That's all.
But that's what I was trying to clarify. If the designers have designed you an efficient design, and as I said, I do it, it doesn't matter, I do it, one day I do it for the contractor, the other day I just do it for a client, but you're getting the same team, you're getting easier, protecting all my engineers. So it's not like when I work for a contractor, all of a sudden, I miraculously flip that plan around and I pull $3 million out of a hat with me. Only where you can get more value out of a contractor is where he, in his shrewdness, shaves it right down to the bare bones. And when I design the building as designer for you, I'm working for you, when I write the spec in that, I get to write a full spec, because I do design bid build, you need to do the full design and full spec in that process. Generally speaking, I don't go down to bare bones. Now, when you go design bid build, as David said, right now, this isn't, theoretically, you could, you could just do it in a letter and say, I want 74 buses. But you can't, because you need some criterias to control a baseline, we call it terms of reference, to control how low the design builder will bid to, because if you don't, you don't know what you're going to get.
That's why I prefaced my remarks by asking the question, at this stage of, that we've already spent $400,000, would we be at a point where we had enough information to do that? And the answer was no.
The terms of reference specification have not been written. So give you a ballpark figure, like, 100% would be, for this project, say, 150 sheets of drawing and a specification like that. If you go design build, you may need maybe 20 sheets of drawing, but you, which we don't have, with a lot more detail. And you would still need what we call a performance specification, less, but you still have to go through the design.
Counselor Gates?
Thanks, Mr. Daddy. To your, to your point, sir, I actually have had a lot of conversation around design build around this table for a while, and I also believe that you lose a lot of your control over your, your building, because the guy's obviously there to make a profit, and how he gets there within the guideline. So I understand what you're saying, but I think what I'm trying to figure out, and I like to say exactly what Vic has said, my fellow counselor, it is kind of concerning to me to not get this in my package last week. It is concerning that the number one bullet here is that the timeframe to partnerships, commitment deadline for the funding is tonight. I've had that conversation a number of times with, with staff, that I don't think it's a way that the, the counselors should be requested to do business on behalf of the residents of Niagara Falls. So I do have some problems with how that came about. But also, if I take, take a look at the, from the October 24th meeting, and there was a motion that was carried to 5 to 4, I had thought that we were pretty clear that we wanted this thing built to meet the needs and best availability to the residents and to the tourist sector, but at a cost of $21.5 million. I don't believe there is, was any will, even that particular night, that this particular facility is going to cost taxpayers any more money. And to Counselor Carrio and Counselor Peter Angelo, I think that's where our heads would be. I'm not going to speak for other counselors, but 21.5 is, is I think what we have, million. And how do we get a facility that we can build for that price range? I think that's kind of why Counselor Carrio is talking about, let's take a look at other options, whether it be design build. You know, we can have that debate on whether that's a good thing or a bad thing, but at the end of the day, here's the dollars you have, this is what you're going to have to try to build on behalf of the residents of Niagara Falls. And I think that's being fair by the counselors. I believe that message was said on October 24th. Maybe we didn't do as good a job as relaying that message, I don't know. But that's certainly where I'm at on this. Obviously, we like to get it done, but that's kind of where I'm at on this proposal on the, on the 21.5. And I'm certainly not going to speak for Vic, but I think that's where Vic is, and I think that's where we're, Carrio. So thanks very much, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor. We're going to ask, our CAO is going to comment.
If, Mr. Mayor, if I could just put this in perspective, and I think last time we did meet, we did get the message, because we went back as a group with the architects and project management, and we looked at the building, and there was, in our mind, a significant number of items that were reduced from that building to get it down to what we thought was manageable. But I just want to put it in perspective to council. And the drawings, and I believe the financial layout was sent by package to council over the weekend, so you had the numbers. You didn't have the PowerPoint presentation, but you had the numbers and the drawings over the weekend to look at. Our feeling is, is that we're at a position right now, and we don't need to force a decision of council tonight, but we need council to be thinking about this, because we need to proceed. Right now, again, we've got 21, $21.7 million that are, has either come to us from either the province and feds, or through our new partnership with GOAL. And that is external money. Quite frankly, we have not put any of our own local dollars into this project. And we are in the transit business, and it's our feeling as a staff that if we're going to be in the transit business, to get a building that's going to be functional and serve our needs for the next probably 40 years, you know, we don't think it's unrealistic to at least go down the further steps to get more cost estimates on the base option, and possibly the inside storage option for council's consideration. If we don't go with the base option, we are putting some of the other external funding in jeopardy, because if we can't build a building of that size for roughly this amount of money, and we have to go back and scale that building down, we may not be able to accommodate our conventional transit in this building, and we'd simply have to go with, say, the VTS and GOAL. We're going to have some operational difficulties there, because we'd be operating two facilities. There would be operational costs that we'd have to incur in addition to what we're paying now, because we'd be running two facilities. And I think it's already been said that just to bring our current building up to safety standard, we're looking at a bottom minimum contribution of $4 million from this council. So, you know, if we hadn't have had the VTS project come to fruition, and if GOAL hadn't have partnered with us, at some point in time, we as a corporation would have had to have put some dollars into this building. And what we're trying to do is get to a stage where, right now, we're looking at, at the base option, a potential contribution of around a little over $2 million. And what we're saying is, we need to, no, fairly soon, tonight, we would like a direction there, if we can't get it tonight, hopefully next week, that if council can't even buy in with the base option, we need to go back and drastically redo what this relationship with the VTS and GOAL bus looks like. Because our fear is that to get the project down in size, to accommodate almost doubling the fleet, we may have to make some serious decisions. And that may be, you know- And that may be, you know, foregoing of a GO relationship, or leaving our existing conventional transit at the existing location, because we're not sure that we can accommodate all of those buses and all of the activity at one location within this budget. Now, this budget still has two more estimates to go through, and we don't know where those cost. It has to go through a formal tender bidding price, a formal competition. So, we don't know where those bid, we're hoping these prices will come in lower. But at the end of the day, if, if, if council, if, if looking at a potential $2 million contribution from us on a $21 million facility, or a $23 million facility, if that's not in council's appetite, we need to know that sooner or later, so we can get back and redesign this. And again, we've brought these relationships here, you know, we had hoped that we could bring this building in at a cost. But again, I guess our feeling is, is that with that $21 million that's been brought to the table, you know, our belief is that a couple of million dollars additional investment from the city, which would be our total investment in this project, may be something that we want to consider in terms of continuing our transit operation with this building serving us for the next 40 years. So, Mr. Mayor, I, you know, we're, we're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to force council on a decision tonight, but we do need to get some decisions very soon, so that if we need to go in a different direction, we can, we can move on with this project.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. Is there any other comments to this point, or questions of councillor?
Well, you know, when you look at 21, 23, 26 million dollars, you kind of get hung up on that. But when you consider that the vast majority of this money is coming from elsewhere, you know, $2 million for basic with the outdoor storage, which I don't think, I really do think it's a false economy, or $5 million and get at least some indoor storage, so we can have the buses running on time in the winter, I think that's a heck of a deal. Like, $5 million to get a facility like this? That's not bad. I don't mind seeing my taxes go up that little bit to, to get this.
Councillor Thompson?
Well, just to make it clear where I stand, this has been a discussion that's been going on for probably 25 or 30 years, working towards a system that is going to be appropriate for a world-class destination. We're not talking about $21 million. We're talking about a total of, what, $56 million handed to the municipality. So, we're talking $56 million, and our portion of that is $2 or $4 million to make it not a Cadillac, as has been talked about, but an appropriate transit depot that is going to be appropriate for the next 40 years. So, I think you either go big or go home. This is nickel and diming, diming something that we've worked on for 30 years, and it's, it's going to be cut short at the last minute. I just don't understand it. This, this isn't even what I envisaged as a total storage. We're still leaving half of the buses out. So, and I think this has been explained very clearly, what the economic benefits are of having the buses indoors. Yes, some of them can be stored because of the winter season. How many, that's still up in the air, depending on the convention business we get. But it all comes down to a few dollars, but jobs and opportunity that this community is built on. This is our lifeblood. Fortunately, we had some good news a little while ago, where through Serge Filicetti, yourself, and councillor Gates, we got a few good industrial jobs. We work just as hard always on getting industrial jobs here, but they don't come like they do with tourism. We're blessed to have the opportunities that we have. So, just to make it very clear, if we're going to do this, I want to make sure we do it right, and that's where, where I stand on the issue.
Any other feedback, comments, or questions of council at this point? Is there any more to the presentation, Mr. Drenner, is that kind of, that sums it up? So, it comes down to a question of, if we want a base facility just for GO, it's going to be an extra expense approximately, I understand we have to put it out for tender yet, but approximately $2 million. And if we want to have 50% of our, our fleet indoors, it'll be $4.5 million. So, that's what the decision is, right? Am I missing anything, or?
No, Mr. Mayor. And that's, what, there will still be further cost estimates, and obviously the tendering and all that will come back to council at some point. And these numbers will be different based on that tendered process. But I, I guess the thing is, is that, you know, we would, what we'd like to see council do, if council, the first decision that council would have to make is, is there an appetite to go with the base model, which may require approximately a $2 million investment by the city? That's sort of the first decision. The second decision would be that if that's a decision that council makes, we'd like the option to go out and explore the 50% storage, so that when we tender, we could tender the base option and the option with the 50% storage, so that when the tender prices came back, council would have an option to go with the base or the 50%, and we would have both, both tender prices in front of us. But our feeling is, is that we'd like to at least explore the option, at least get prices on the 50%, because you've heard some of the evidence tonight, that we think ultimately that's the way to go, if we're looking at a facility that's going to carry us through the next 40 years of our transit operation. So, whether that decision, if, whether council feels comfortable making that decision tonight, or whether or not they, they want a week or back together next Monday, I'll leave that in your hands.
Can I ask a question as well, for my own curiosity? I know that we've got the specs on what we're looking for, and it's been priced out. And I know that we, I think, everyone feels the same way, we want everything to be on site, we don't want to have multiple sites, because that's going to be multiple costs and very inefficient. Is there other costs that could be saved through the office portion of this? Are there, I know where councillor Maves was going with this, are there some perks that don't necessarily need to be there? And, and would it be significant, are we talking insignificant numbers?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't say, when you talk about perks, we're talking about space. So, here we have our transportation engineering group here. Our transportation engineering group, just to put it in perspective, was in the basement at City Hall. And when the Gale Center, I'm sorry, when the Gale Center opened, there were some offices at McBain that were vacant. So, we moved our transportation engineering group out of the basement and put them temporarily at McBain, hoping that when this building came along, that we could move them all together under one site at this location. Could they be left at McBain? Yes, they could be left at McBain. Our feeling was that, you know, to have that sort of transportation group all under one roof made some sense for efficiencies, but certainly those are the kind of things we could look at. But that was sort of the reason they were moved out of City Hall in the first place, because we had, had some issues with them operating out of the basement, and we thought that temporarily, that the McBain Center would be a, a good temporary site for them. But, but this is based on those two units being together out at this site.
Councillor Wing?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we direct staff to explore and get pricing on the 50% storage option.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Wing. So, you're, that's base and 50%? Or, yeah, okay. Okay, councillor Thompson?
Does that, that still gives us the options to make decisions, whether we want to cut back, or you're still at the decision-making process with respect to that?
Yes, and if we kept those options proceeding along, again, council can look at a base, and we can look at the 50% storage. I would think if even when the tender prices come in on the base, you know, we may have to make some decisions then to cut out some additional floor space or something like that.
So, we still have a lot of flexibility.
This process is, is going to be ongoing for the next couple of months before we get this firm down.
Good, then we got a timeframe. So, I'll, I'll second the motion, we got decisions to make in the future, but at least this gets us on the road to moving the project along and trying to have it on schedule for when we're going to need it.
Okay, so we have a move by councillor Wing, second by councillor Thompson, that they explore the pricing of the base plus 50% storage, the two options, that's the motion on the floor right now?
Explore the pricing?
Well, what do we, what do we, how did we word that?
Mr. Mayor, based on that motion, we'd be moving to the next steps in the process to get to the next cost estimates, and to, you know, prepare drawings, and move down the step of actually getting this tendered. And I don't know what the timeframe for that is, but.
Yeah, the next step is to get into detailed design, and when we get to 80% of design, we will have a Class B cost estimate, which will be about plus, plus or minus 10% in terms of reliability. So, that we would expect to happen in six or seven weeks. And then the next step after that would be detailed, excuse me, detailed design. So, there's still time to make modifications of the design now and then, and the, and the 80%, and the final design.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I mean, I, I just heard Mr. Stram and our CAO say that we can move it to the next step, we can still study the base design, we can study 50% indoor storage. If we're not happy with the prices when we get them back, we can downsize at that point.
Well, I think what we're saying is that at that next stage, there'll be another price estimate that'll be given. And if that price, you know, is not acceptable as we move along, we can, we can do some paring down of the design at that point before it gets finalized. Two, two more kicks, basically.
Yeah, and not, this, we did the same thing with the arena, and the same thing with the community center. I mean, we, we were so over budget at, at this stage, that we started to cut back. And 80%, we moved the, the walls of the arena, and I mean, because we knew we were over budget. You know, the level, the, the detail and the accuracy in terms of design and cost estimates continues to get better as you move forward, obviously. And right now, we're just at schematic design, so the cost estimates that you have before you are plus or minus 20, 25% either way. So, that's, you know, that's why, as Manny Ing said, they're elemental. We can't tell you that what, what an office is cost, but we can tell you what, you know, all the concrete curb will cost, you know, that, that kind of thing. So, we get into that, we're able to answer some of the specific questions on spaces a lot easier as well.
So, plus or minus 15%? So, I mean, that, that variance that we're talking?
Yeah, right now, we're at about plus or minus 20%.
20, okay, it says 15.
Yeah, well, 15 to 20, but usually Class C is 20% around that. And then we get to 80%, which is the next time that we report a cost estimate, that'll be a Class B, we'll be at plus or minus 10%.
Okay, councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I guess it begs the question, then, why does the first point say an investment commitment is required this evening?
Well, I, well, I think that what that means is that if, if there was no appetite at all to go with the base design, we need to go back and really rethink this schematic here tonight. If, if, if the indication was, look, we'll, we'll proceed down the path of a base, knowing that there may be some, and then that is up to $2 million, commitment, that council would say, yeah, go ahead based on that basis. The 50% storage would be about 4.5 million commitment. So, but if council tonight said, we're not spending a nickel, then we'd have to go back and, and do a really hard look at this design right now, because we'd really have to come up with about, you know, over $2 million in savings or reductions out of that plan right there.
So, then, when you're referencing the base design, you're referencing more the price?
The.
The price of it.
Well, that, that design, the base design is that building with.
I understand what the base design is, but when you say that if council doesn't have an appetite for even the base design.
Yes.
You're referencing that in terms of.
Price, yes.
You are.
Yes.
So, you're taking this motion tonight to mean that council is going to commit at least 20, almost $24 million to the project?
No, council would be committing, under the base, would be committing $2 million to the project.
No, I know, but a total of 24.
But that money's already committed.
I, I understand.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, it is taxpayers' money, because, I mean, it's over and above the 21 and a half that we're getting. That's, I mean, that's the issue with some of us, you know, is that some of us believe that, you know, things can be perhaps a little bit smaller, and you can get down to the 21 and a half. That's all.
And we're not saying.
So, this motion, though, is, is committing us to that basement.
And we're not saying that's not a possibility, as we get down to finer detail on the design. As Mr. Stram said, you know, we're now at about 15, 20% variance. At the next stage, that'll get down to about 10%. So, those numbers may firm up and may become better, but what we're saying is, if council doesn't have any appetite to, to invest any dollars in this, then we've got to go and rethink this right now, or within the next week, in terms of how we're going to function this building. Because you're talking, you're really saying to us, go back and find at least, at least based on, on this estimate here at the 15 to 20%, go and find at least $2 million in cuts on this building. And, you know, but we need to, we sort of need to know that now before we go to the next step.
Councillor Carrio? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, councillor Carrio, I had councillor Wing, and then councillor Carrio.
Thank you. The way I look at this is, this isn't about the $21.5 billion. That is not the city of Niagara Falls' money. That is being invested by other bodies to build something to house the VTS fleet and the GO fleet for this area. And what we're looking at is if we kick in a few million more of Niagara Falls taxpayers' dollars, that we can actually also replace our own aged facility over there that is really in need of repair or replacement, to a tune of a lot more than $2 or $5 million. We'll replace those offices, we'll have a new place to house our fleet. There's no way we can replace or repair what's there for $2 or $5 million. So, this is one heck of a deal.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carrio?
I don't disagree. My feeling is just that we should get the facility for $22 million bucks. It's my feeling that this facility is not worth more than $22 million bucks. That's my own feeling, I may be wrong, but I'm not going to stand in the way of going to the next level, obviously. Tonight, we have a Davis saying that, you know, we could have a 20% variance, where he could be off by $4 million bucks, on $20 million bucks. He could be off by $4 million. I'm hoping if we get to the next level, he's going to say, maybe we can do it for, you know, that kind of money, and we won't have to go back on the taxpayers'. So, obviously, it's not going to cost us anything to take it to the next level.
All right. If there are no other comments, then we've got a motion on the floor, and we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay? It's unanimous. Great, thank you. Now, on the next order of business, I understand we're going to ask the clerk to, to address.
Your worship, under the miscellaneous planning items, the applicant has asked for a deferral to allow him some time to get legal representation.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded, is there a second for the deferral?
Yes.
Seconded by councillor Wing, councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, I should have declared a conflict on this. I declared a conflict at the committee of adjustment, the testimony hearing device lock, and a member of my family has testimony hearing device locked.
Okay, noted conflict by councillor Peter Angelo. I'm sorry?
Which item were we?
That is item miscellaneous planning matters, PD 201208, appeal of committee of adjustment decision.
It's under appeal as we speak. Yeah, just to explain, just know, just to explain, staff has already filed the appeal, okay, with the OMB. So, what would happen is, when the report comes back, council, as you've done on other ones like these, you've either directed staff to withdraw the appeal, or to continue the appeal. Obviously, the way the OMB goes, we feel confident that even if we bring the matter back in February, there shouldn't be an issue, because the OMB will not have scheduled anything as far as the appeal goes. There's also an additional appeal by a neighboring resident.
Okay?
It's a motion.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor to defer.
All of the reports?
Pardon me?
So, it's not all in the report?
All those in favor?
I don't read the report.
Of the deferral? All those in favor of the deferral? Opposed?
Just reading, so we can read.
Okay, and councillor Carrio, councillor Carrio opposed?
He made the motion. He had his hand up.
Okay. Okay, next up, mayor's remarks for tonight. Okay, okay, next up, mayor's remarks for tonight. First off, obituaries, Vernon Anderson, known better as Buck, retired city employee, passed away, as well as Steve Norris's mother, Vivian Norris, passed away, and Antonio Domenico Caruso, father-in-law of Carl Dren, also passed away. So our hearts go out to those people that have lost members of their families. Recent events, New Year's Eve celebration was a very, very big success, the biggest ever in the city's history. We were told by the Parks Police, there were in excess of 60,000 people in the park, and we understand that we're waiting for the final numbers on the TV viewing, viewing audience, but what we do know is, we had bigger numbers than the city of Toronto, both in the park and televised nationally. So it was a huge, huge, successful event, and I understand at the same time, there's a big event going on at the convention center, so all hotel rooms were, the 5,000 people, all hotel rooms were packed, the highway was backed up right out of town. There's no question Niagara Falls was New Year's Eve for Canada this year, and by all signs, a lot of good things to come. And I know Serge Filasetti worked very, very hard with the Parks Commission and our other partners, Global TV, and Global TV Entertainment, E T Canada, were thrilled with the way they were treated, they were thrilled with the way things went, and we have to say, we're very, very pleased with it and looking forward to apparently next year being even bigger, which is, yeah, that's right. Well, happy ending, we're happy about that. We had our, we had our city levy, which was great this year. We partnered up with our, first time ever, three levels of government, plus the region. We had our M P P, our M P city, and we're all dressed up in period dress, and it was a big success. We had about 300 people come out for that, and including a number of members of council, and a lot of fun. So we start the celebrations, three years of celebrations on the bicentennial of the War of 1812, and a reminder that we're celebrating 200 years of peace and 200 years of the world's largest unmilitarized border, so it was a, it was a big success and a lot of fun, and I'm sure everybody's going to be working on getting their, their chop sideburns together. Gary Burles, he took the award with those, those great sideburns. As well, I'd like to mention, mayor of Welland, Barry Sharp, had stents put in, he had some issues in the surgical unit at the hospital, he's doing better, and we wish him all the best with a speedy recovery. Some real good news here, Niagara Falls was just recently ranked number one on TripAdvisor's Travelers Choice Awards as number one family destination in all of Canada. That was ahead of Banff, Whistler, and all the other destinations, so number one in the country, which is huge, and it's great Niagara Falls Tourism, along with their partners, are doing a great job promoting the destination and...
Except we don't have the buses to take...
Except we don't have any buses yet, but we're working on buses. Looking ahead, looking ahead. Volunteering, if anyone's looking to volunteer, we need some snow buddies. And for those of you that are not aware, Snow Buddies is our program by where, by which we have volunteers that will shovel the walkways and the porches and stairs of those people that are not capable, either they've got health issues or age issues or otherwise, and all you have to do, if you'd like to volunteer, is go to the city's website, go to niagarafalls.ca, you can find where you can register there, and if you're a student, you can get some of your volunteer hours for graduation. So there's a lot of opportunities for everyone. If you're just looking for some extra exercise, it's a great opportunity as well. State of the City address will be coming up on Monday, March the 26th, so we recommend, if anyone is interested in attending, it's going to be a great guest speaker that day, yours truly. So Monday, March 26th, mark it down, it'll be at the Marriott Gateway, and it's put on by the Chamber of Commerce. You find something funny about that? Also, Sports Wall of Fame is coming up this coming Sunday, January the 29th, at 2:00 PM at the Gale Centre. So everybody, the public and council, obviously, is invited. As well, we'd like to wish, wish Carrie Campbell, working for the city in our office and helping the mayor's office and all of council, as she goes off on maternity leave, that she has safe delivery, and as well, we'd like to welcome Sarah Canidi, who'll be filling in as on maternity leave in her place. And Carrie trained her, and she's a good person, and we look forward to working well together. So if you need extra assistance at the office, Sarah Canidi is who you can ask for. And closing remarks, just to remind everybody, it's, it is still snow season, it hasn't really kicked in, but be mindful of plows, drive carefully, and remind not to park overnight on the city streets as well, reminding everybody about our bowling opportunity, and look forward to Mayor Battaway wearing his pom poms, so we'll have to give him the gears on that issue. So next up, we are dealing with communications and comments of the city clerk. So first up, item one, we've got Heritage Week request for proclamation, February 20 to 26, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Wing. Would you like to speak to that, councillor Wing?
I'd just like to note the highlights. The theme for this year is the heritage of power generation, very important, especially here in Niagara Falls. Power-related structures are an important part of the Canadian landscape. This Heritage Week theme celebrates the past, but also looks forward as the world's attention turns to energy use reduction and new sources of green energy. The staff report notes that heritage conservation supports these new priorities with its emphasis on using and retrofitting historic buildings and respecting the inherent energy-saving design features present in many older buildings. And the, the annual heritage showcase at Niagara Square, which we began in 2000 and is still going, will be held this year from February 17th to 19th as a kickoff to Heritage Week.
Great, thank you very much. Do we have a motion? We'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Item two, Heart and Stroke, are asking for February to be Heart Month, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor?
Okay, great.
F C M is requesting February 5th to 11th be proclaimed as International Development Week, moved by councillor Carey, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay, great. Winter Festival Lights requesting firework display on January 28th, moved by councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Carey. All those in favor? It's unanimous. And city clerk, you have, are you bringing this one forward, or the memo from the city clerk regarding requesting the region to name the extension of Thorlstone Road as Terry Fox Way? There's a recommendation to move it to the region? Councillor Peter Angelo?
Your worship, Mr. Ifeeta was sort of hesitant to, to send it to the region, because the region has their own process, so he does have a recommendation here in his notes, and I would just move the, the recommendation, let it be sent on to the region.
Okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates, that we send the request off to the region. I guess they'll do their own public meeting, and it seems there's been some duplication with the city as well.
Yeah, exactly, as council knows, you had the issue of Roberts Street being the name change, it was a matter that's gone back and forth, and in their infinite wisdom, the region has decided to do another public process on that matter. They're actually considering it at the Public Works Committee next week. I know councillor Peter Angelo had brought up the possibility of renaming the extension of Thorlstone Road as Terry Fox Way. We had met as staff, talked about maybe an internal road, but councillor Peter Angelo's desirous of that section of Thorlstone. So it appears that the region's taking over that process again, so we will direct it to the region if council approves the request.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council? Either or none? Okay, we've got two reports here. First off, H R 201201, full-time firefighter recruitment. I know we had Todd Brunning, president of Niagara Falls Professional Firefighter Association, in attendance tonight as well, with his support and the chief's support as well. Is there any movement on the recommendation?
Second motion.
Moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Thompson. Is there any discussion around the, the motion? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? I'm sorry?
Disagreement.
All those in favor, I'm sorry? Okay, it's unanimous, thank you very much. And item R and C, 201201, city float?
Move the report.
Move the report, received and filed, councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Wing. All those in favor? Okay, great, thank you. And now I'll switch seats with councillor...
What's that?
Wants to defer.
To defer? You want to defer the budget?
Yeah, I'd like the report, because it's not a lot of detail, anyway.
Well, is, is there some stuff you want to report on?
No, it's, it's just an entry presentation into what, you've received the budget binder tonight, and it's really intended just to give you an overview of what's in it and what we did, and the intention was to have the discussion next week, give, after you've had an opportunity to read the, to read the, the information that's there. So if you don't want to listen to, if you'd, if you'd rather not have the presentation, that's fine, that's...
What's the will of council? Okay, so how long was this going to take, by the way, this overview?
Based on tonight, it could take a lot longer than I anticipated.
Councillor Wing?
You know, we're missing two people, we went two hours overtime on an earlier meeting. I'd say let's wait till next week and do this.
Okay, fair enough.
So I'll second the motion for deferral.
Okay, moved by councillor Thompson.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, that's not a problem. We're going to be doing the meat and potatoes next week on the budget, so...
No gravy, right?
I'm not in my condition on the left.
Not allowed to have any gravy.
Okay, all right. Okay, moved by councillor Thompson. Seconded by councillor Wing for a deferral of this presentation to the next meeting. All those in favor? Okay, it's approved. Okay, ratification of committee of the whole, Mr. Clerk?
Well, it's not, committee of the whole got moved up here, as you know, so it's not committee of the whole, but I do have the ratification of the in-camera items. A few things regarding the Niagara Falls Memorial Arena, that council directed staff to go back to the proponents that made the offer. Council, additional items, council authorized that the mayor and clerk sign the purchase agreement for the Zavitz property located at the corner of Swayze Drive and Stanley Avenue, and the council authorized, or, and the council authorized staff to provide an offer to the district school board of Niagara related to the Battlefield School property, conditional upon the rezoning.
Okay, move in, a motion rece, okay, councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates?
No, I just want, I just want to, sorry, Mayor Dear Daddy, on the Zavitz properties, in camera, I voted against it because I don't agree with the amount, so...
Okay, noted as being opposed?
Well, once you take the vote, if you can get a second.
Okay, well, that was just specifically on that one issue, right? Yeah, out of the five issues. Okay, so do we have a second? We've got moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Carey. Any other discussion?
I was opposed the same as councillor Gates, but I voted for it.
We just can't vote the same thing.
That's right, okay. Anyway, we have a motion, all those in favor? Okay, it's approved, thank you. We have the consent agenda, we have 10 items. Okay, a motion to move the consent agenda, councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Carey. Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, super. Do we have a motion, introduce the bylaws? Oh, well, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws listed?
Yes, your worship, bylaw 2012-03 will be pulled, obviously, so that'll necessitate the renumbering of the three subsequent bylaws.
Okay. Motion, introduce the bylaws for first reading, Mr. Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2012-001 to 2012-005, read a first time.
Second and third reading, councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves. All those in favor? Okay?
Bylaws 2012-001 to 2012-005, read a second and third time and passed.
Okay, new business, councillor Wing?
Thank you, I've got four items. The first is the longer one. I'd like to have staff report back on, or perhaps develop a resolution requesting the province reexamine the 99 V Q A Act to extend V Q A benefits to other made-on Ontario wines like fruit wines and maple wines and anything that's a non-greek wine, or alternatively, set up a comparative double regulator for wine products made 100 percent in Ontario from 100 percent Ontario products, or, and/or allow the 100 percent Ontario-produced fruit wines to be sold at farmers' market. And how I got all this was, there was an article in the January 16th, Financial Post on this, and really, the basic problem is the playing field for wineries in Ontario isn't level. Other provinces like Alberta and B C have liberalized their alcohol control laws to make them more attractive to all aspiring winemakers, whether grape-based or otherwise, and Ontario apparently is still a little bit in the dark ages. And when I read this, I could see opportunities here to really strengthen and hopefully grow our agricultural sector. Niagara's one of only three areas in Canada that has the climate and the soil suitable for growing tender fruit, and, you know, I don't just see this being something that benefits farmers who are growing the products, but I can see the possibilities for indirect benefits to the manufacturing sector and agritourism. So there's, there's some real possibilities here that we need to capitalize on, because we're blessed to have the kind of microclimate and soils that we, we have here. The only other two places are the Napolis Valley in Nova Scotia, and, or did I get it wrong, no, and B C, the Okanagan Valley. So we're really lucky, and this is an advantage we have that we should be capitalizing on. So I can, move for, or do you want me to just do it all? There's two that are related, I can do them in one motion. Also, I'd like to have staff report back on and develop a resolution in support of C 311. It's a federal private members bill calling upon the federal government to remove the trade restrictions which prevent Ontario wines from being shipped to other Canadian provinces, and there was an article in the October 1st National Post on that. Conservative MP for Okanagan, Dan Elbes, has a private members bill that's seeking to amend the, it's called the Importation of Intoxicating Liquors Act, and it was passed in 1928 to clamp down on bootlegging, and it's still in full force and effect. And basically, it makes it illegal to ship wine from other provinces unless that wine's exported by the liquor board. So, you know, it's really onerous on our, on our local wine industry, and so it's just basically letting Canadians be able to enjoy wines from different provinces. They visit and have a general exemption for, for personal use. So that's my first matter, and I'll move that.
Okay, moved by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Thompson. Okay, that we work on this crazy prohibition rule that's been here forever?
Presidentally going through the...
Exactly.
We're supporting it.
Yeah, we're supporting, showing our support for, for that resolution, and we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, yes?
Well, I think what the idea is, that we'll come back with a more formal resolution, probably for the 31st, although you've got your 31st agenda tonight, we would probably add it as additions. I've talked to councillor Wing about it.
Okay, thanks. The second one is just sort of advisement that tomorrow, the clerk and I will be meeting with Kim Crater and regional health representatives, it'll be Bjorn Christensen and an associate office, medical officer of health, regarding the practice of some employers of just routinely requesting doctor's notes when every employee calls in sick. It leads to employees going into work when they're still sick, even if it's a restaurant they're working in. It's a waste of doctors' time, they could actually be seeing patients who they can help instead of just seeing patients for the sake of writing a note, and there's a whole host of problems with it. So we're having a meeting tomorrow, and hopefully we'll have something developed for the 31st on that. And the other one is asking staff to, to look at cottage rentals and report back on the merits of developing a by, a bylaw regulating them a bit more. There are relatively new use in Niagara Falls, and I think staff need to study it with a view to developing a policy for assessing and evaluating applications. You know, right now, we don't really have any criteria in place in terms of what kind of housing types they can go in, what kind of parking might be required, what kind of separation distances might be, might be good, so if staff can, you know, look at that and report back on a policy for assessing future applications, I'd appreciate that as well.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Wing that we develop a policy procedure for cottage rental applications. Do we get a second for, for that? Yes, moved by, or seconded by councillor Peter Angelo? Is there any discussion on that? Councillor Thompson?
Well, isn't, isn't this done by zoning application? Don't they have to come for council and get approval for a cottage rental? And that's, that's their way of committing, the council controlling it?
Yes, and I mean, you had one, you had one in December that we dealt with. I think what the idea is, is maybe some, some specific, you know, like councillor Wing said, specific setbacks, that sort of thing, maybe size-wise. Planning has indicated there is maybe an application that's in the process right now, so I think part of that application...
so I think part of that application, there may be some general recommendations that'll come back from staff in that report.
Okay, so councillor Wing, does that change your motion?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, it's moved, thank you. Any other ones, councillor Wing? No? Okay. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. Few items on the arena, Your Worship. The first one was logos on the ice. I was under the impression that we were going to put some, some logos that designated the numbers 40 to commemorate the fact that the Niagara Falls Canucks have been here 40 years. I guess I've been told, you know, that there was some go-between, staff went back to the owners of the Canucks and asked them to pay for it to go in the ice. I guess it wasn't really my understanding, I don't know what the rest of council feels. I just thought it would be a good gesture on the city's part to actually put that logo in to let the public know that the Canucks have been here for 40 years, and I would still make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates, that the city take care of putting in the 40 on the ice number one, right on the main, on the main bowl at the Gale Centre. Is there any comments or discussion on that? Okay, we'll call the motion, the vote, all those in favor? Okay?
Second item, Your Worship, that deals with the arena is, I'm not sure if council members know, but I guess this year we started to use cold water when we flood the ice as opposed to hot water. I know it doesn't sound like a big difference, but a lot of people that use the ice believe that it is. And I'm just wondering, actually, I guess through your staff perhaps to our director of parks and rockers, or even our CIOs, you know, if council can be updated sort of on the feedback that you've received, I mean, I just want to know that the feedback that you've received is consistent with the same one that I've received, and if so, you know, whether or not we're going to maintain this cold water flood as opposed to the hot water flood. There's a lot of users that believe that the ice doesn't get frozen up, and that the ice doesn't come together as solid as it does when you use hot water. And when you're, when you're, when you have very powerful skaters out there, as we do a lot of times, I mean, they make, they make big ruts in the ice, and they firmly believe that when you use the cold water, while it might freeze over, it doesn't actually, doesn't actually bond it together, so that when another skate goes by, that rut automatically comes out again. So I don't know if that's the same type of feedback that you've been receiving, but, you know, perhaps we can share information and let council know.
We certainly can. And it is just something that's being tested by the arena staff. It was a product that came to us, it is being tested in a few other arenas around Ontario. We saw it as an opportunity to test it out, see whether that technology worked, because it reduces, obviously, your electricity costs and, or natural gas costs in terms of heating up the water. But I don't think we've quite completed the test, and maybe Kathy can speak to that.
The testing is still ongoing, and we've actually received mixed results. Some people have been on the ice and were not even aware that we were using a cold water flood, and they saw no difference in the quality of the ice. We have indeed, though, received some complaints as well. So it, we also need to do training with the staff, because you can't do a quick flood when you're doing, looking at the cold water, it definitely has to be an eight to 10-minute flood. So there is some training that has to be conducted with the staff as well. So we're definitely still in a learning period, we are testing it out, but we definitely are looking, as Ken Todd was mentioning, different ways that we can reduce our utility costs at the arena.
Good. I guess then something will come back to council?
My guess, if you ask, Mayor, I guess if we get to the point, if we, if we're going to fully utilize this technology, there will be some capital expenditures. I think we may, if you'd like a report back, we could do that. If the tests don't work out, then we'll, we'll carry on with some other ideas, but if you'd like a report on the results, you'd have to do.
I would, Your Worship, just because some of the feedback that I've been getting is, is negative on the cold water.
Sure, we can report back.
Okay. And then I guess my third item on the arena.
Motion on that?
Oh, on that issue, I'm sorry. A motion on that?
Just to Kathy, I spend a fair amount of time in the arena, and I've been getting the same complaints as Victor. But to your point, I think you're absolutely right, there are some people that wouldn't notice a difference, like.
Councillor Kerrio?
Councillor Kerrio. So I just thought I'd let you know that.
The showers are hot.
Same issue?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, councillor Maves?
I heard the same complaint, and I think too, that we have to be careful about this because if the ice isn't as good, as good quality, I heard it was dangerous, one person almost hit his head on the boards, and I think it could be a liability exposure, so I hope we can get this thing over with quickly.
We have a motion from councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Gates, to get a report back on the cold water treatments to the ice surface. All those in favor? Okay, it's anonymous, thank you. Councillor Peter Angelo?
Worship, last item on the arena, just deals with the report, I think it was back probably three or four months ago. I had asked, when council had approved, a report back to council that gave us sort of an update of where we are today in terms of any efficiencies that we've gained by going into the Gale Centre. I know, you know, the reports leading towards the forepad were all about the efficiencies that were going to be had once we actually got into the new building, but we still haven't received any type of report back to tell us how great those efficiencies have been. So I'm just wondering, when are we going to get that report back?
Coming soon. We need to wait for year-end. The staff have got the report drafted up. We've also added a few more things in it, other than just efficiencies, because we're wanting to look at ice utilization and things of that nature too. So the report should be, I would hope sometime in February, we'd have that report back.
Councillor Peter Angelo?
Thanks, Your Worship. Onto another issue. Back maybe a couple of months ago, council passed a planning document that dealt with a whole bunch of little minor changes to our existing bylaw. And I guess when we passed the report, we passed all of these little changes as in one motion. Now, my understanding is that one of the changes that we made is being appealed by the Ontario Restaurant Association, which is fine, but that the, but that the whole document went to the Ontario Municipal Board, and all these other little changes are being held up. And I'm wondering.
Is the case.
Well, we just, we just dealt with an application of committee of adjustments where the staff told us that, that the bylaw could not be changed because of the fact that, you know, another group opposing another part of that planning document had appealed it to the Ontario Municipal Board. And my question is, you know, should we be looking at passing recommendations individually? You know, would we pass them so that if one group or one party wants to oppose a change in our bylaw, then they're opposing that change only, and they're not holding up 20 or 30 other minor changes?
Mr. Beaman?
I have not yet completed my research, but in dealing with that particular one, the restaurateurs association, I'm thinking we may, I may respond to that creatively and come to council with a proposal as to how we'll deal with it. Because I believe the appeal they made of that particular omnibus bill was entirely tactical, because we actually took the step of taking the part they didn't like and took it out, specifically to do with.
Yes, just to get Mr. Beaman on point. I don't want to talk about that, that part of the appeal at all.
Yeah, I understand what you're proposing, and the, and I don't, of course, I can't speak for the planning department. We could do that, but it would be a massive amount of work. We'd kill a lot of trees, make it, make it, because each one of the bylaws would have to be individualized and separated out and so on. But we could do it. Sure. Each one would have a number, and then each clause would be separately, you know, subject to the ability to attack it. But you'd have, like, in the case of this thing, you'd probably, you'd have 23 bylaws. The reason why they appealed the second bylaw is, was to cause us a problem, in my view. What they really wanted to do was do drive-ins, and we separated drive-ins out for them. So they found some reason to appeal the other one.
Yeah, just let me clarify this. Staff did that. In essence, they took those amendments to the zoning bylaw, they put them all in one bylaw for approval after the public meeting and the approval by council, but they separated out, in a separate zoning bylaw, the ones on the speakers for the drive-throughs. But the Ontario Restaurant Association didn't just appeal that bylaw, they also appealed the general provision bylaw. So they appealed two bylaws, you know, really, like Mr. Beaman said, probably to be more tactical than anything else. So staff actually did what you're asking in the sense that we, we knew that they were probably going to appeal the drive-through provisions, the drive-through speaker provisions, so we thought we were doing the smart thing by separating them, but then they pulled the shot by appealing both bylaws. And there's an adjective before the word shot.
And when you're dealing with reasonable people, when you're dealing with reasonable people, you make arrangements like that beforehand, when you know, look, you know, they tell me, you know, they tell the planners, we just can't live with clauses six and seven, we take clauses six and seven, make them a separate bylaw so that we can negotiate that or go to the board on it, and the rest of it, for the rest of the people that nobody wants to appeal, becomes a bylaw. In this particular case, I really think the people were a little bit overly tactical in appealing the second bylaw, and I'm going to propose a response we can make, but I don't want to say here today, because they're probably watching, as to what I'm going to suggest we do.
That's why I didn't want to talk about that.
Because we're going to try to get the bylaw, that, I mean, there's at least a couple people who I am aware, council, need the general provisions to be passed for projects they're trying to get done. You know, they're just little improvements to their house and stuff like that.
Yeah, and that's why I asked, Your Worship, is because the resident, as you know, came to committee of adjustments, had to apply, pay money for a minor variance, submit two sets of drawings to the city, and he had to conform to a bylaw that, at this point in time, is antiquated, because we've already passed a new bylaw with new setbacks. But because that bylaw is being held up from a different group that has, you know, an issue with a different part of the bylaw, it's not actually in place yet. So he had to go through all this trouble and all this expense, just so that he can build himself a new home. So it'd be nice in the future if we could actually get those individualized so that we don't get ones hung up there from a different group. Okay, last issue, Your Worship, is Loews. And I know it opened recently, which is great. And if anyone has driven down Montrose Road, heading towards McLeod Road, I don't know if, if you've seen, but there's an island that comes out at the southerly entrance and exit of Loews, and it actually comes up, it's only a couple inches from the white line on the road. And, I mean, I guess, you know, my, my question, I know it's a regional road, my question more is, is the rationale for allowing an island to come out that far? I mean, don't, don't we want to snowplow the snow back? I know those cars, even when they pass the island, are going more towards the center of the road, and some are going over the yellow line. There's really no place for cyclists anymore, except to go directly onto the road. We've entirely eliminated from the white line that shoulder over by allowing this, this island to come all the way out to the road. And I guess my question, more than anything, was the rationale behind it, and whether or not we can ask them to move it back. I don't think it should be right out to the roadway.
But, Mr. Bolbrook?
Yes, they would have had to get site plan approval from, from planning, so we can relook at that and see if they've done it appropriately.
Okay.
Okay, and report back.
Do you need a motion on that? Yeah, okay, moved by councillor Peter Angelo, seconded by councillor Maves.
And I appreciate that, Mr. Bolbrook. But, I mean, even if they have, are they not into the municipal roadway?
Well, the property would be shown on the site plan, and we do hold letters of credit to make sure they abide by it, so if they've extended that illegally, you know, we'd obviously get, get back to them to, to cut it back.
Okay, I'll forward you a picture.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. Any more, councillor Peter Angelo?
No, that's good. Okay, good. Councillor?
Okay, we've got councillor Gates, Maves, and then Thompson.
Yeah, Mayor Deodaddy, a couple council meetings ago, we had excluded a number of streets on sidewalk plowing. And I believe some of the councillors, and maybe even yourself, have got some complaints about it, and I'd like to put a motion forward that we reconsider doing Cynex, Catalina, and Barker. I've had the complaints there, and I think there are three streets that might, should be added to getting sidewalk plowed, so I'd like to put a motion on that.
We have a motion by councillor Gates, seconded by councillor Kerrio. Any discussion on the motion? Councillor Wing?
Why the heck would you add Barker back on? I mean, you know, it was planned because there was a school there, the school is now closed. It is now nothing except residences.
That one has changed, hasn't it? We did get complaints, though, on Barker Street.
I did.
Some of us are absolutely ecstatic that there is no more plow. You know, I'd have to put up with my side, my turf getting torn up every winter. You know, there's no reason for Barker to be back.
You know, and it's more than one person calling me. Obviously, I guess the mayor must, because he, he looked at his notes, he's got the same, it's the same problem. So I put the motion forward, and obviously, if it doesn't get seconded, it is what it is, but I did put the motion forward, so.
Yeah, councillor Wing?
There's no reason to plow Barker anymore, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing unusual about it, it's strictly residential, there's no school. And if we're going to do it every time, an 82 or 85-year-old resident needs it, then we're going to be plowing every sidewalk in the city. I can think of one in the North End where we have had repeated requests over the years to send the sidewalk plow up there, because these people both, they're, you know, they're elderly, they both have heart conditions, they have to pay somebody to clear the sidewalk out front of their home, and they, there's a sidewalk just to, you know, the next street down, they would like to just come up and clear their sidewalk as well, so we'll be doing every sidewalk in the city. You know, there goes the budget, like, you know, through the roof if we do that.
I'd like to also, if I could comment toward, to Mr. Gates' motion, and I, and I understand exactly, and you're fiscally correct, and I understand, and the discussion I've had, and I had this with our director of municipal works as well, we changed 20 routes last time, and then we notified the residents after the changes were made, and that's when the calls started, and we received quite a number of calls. And the suggestion that we did, we logged to see how many, some were in favor and glad they were removed, and some were very opposed, simply because some people live on certain streets specifically because it's plowed, because they've got oxygen tanks and other issues, and they're trying to avoid going into a home. And I did speak to these people, because, you know, we took the calls, I followed up personally as well, for all the ones I called, and some of these people, so in the end, we went through 20 routes, there was three routes that we received support. And that's a good point about Barker Street, because that did change, the other two streets, nothing changed. That's the only one that did change, but, but I just did want to address that, that this was based on us making our decision last time, and without any further consultation beforehand. I know why we don't do that, because every street would like to have, well, I shouldn't say that, not always, depending on what we do to their side. But, but anyway, that support, in support of councillor Gates' direction, because we did have this discussion when he was getting the calls as well. Councillor Peter Angelo, please.
Worship, I just wanted to make a point on, on snowplowing, and I know that staff doesn't like to add, or isn't particularly fond any way of, of adding routes to, you know, our responsibility. But somewhere along the lines, there has to be some communication between planning and municipal works in the sense that when we, when we plan or when we allow subdivisions to be built now, we build them so that their backyards are on the main streets. And, I mean, I'm thinking mostly of where I work, there isn't, there isn't a single home that fronts on to McLeod Road from Kaler all the way to Gardner Road yet. There's a lot of backyards, and we have to plow that entire street. So, I mean, I know staff don't particularly like sending the sidewalk plows out, but in some, in some instances, we cause it ourselves, basically, in the planning of our subdivisions. So if we have subdivisions that fronted onto the street, then there'd be homeowners there that would more than likely pick up the responsibility of clearing sidewalks. Since we don't, since we allow backyards to go on, it's absolutely no one's responsibility, and we're forced to send a plow in there.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, so if there's no more discussion, we'll call the vote.
Was there a second?
Yeah, it was moved, moved by, seconded by councillor Kerrio. Call the vote, all those in favor? Okay, opposed? Okay. Thank you, councillor.
I just had one quick other issue that, at our December 12th, our last council meeting on December 12th, it was raised over a motion that was put forward by the council, and the response was that councillor Einony and our, and Mayor Jim Deodaddy had met with Mr. Smith of the NHS. Since that time, we've all, there's been a number of changes there, and we've had two more deaths. I'd just like a report of the meeting that was held, if that's possible.
Yeah, and just to.
I actually followed it in tonight, but.
We didn't do a report, it was, it was a teleconference meeting, and it was a discussion that went on, I don't, I don't remember, I think it was about an hour and, hour and a half, maybe, but we didn't do a report on, on the call. So I'm not sure if you wanted some specifics.
Well, maybe you just give us a highlight to the rest of the council of, of the meeting, that's all, just, just so we have. Because obviously, some of the comments in the local papers may be different than what I'm understanding, and I think in fairness, I'd like to. what I'm understanding, and I think in fairness, I'd like to get some highlights from that meeting.
Fair enough. And if that's okay, when Counselor Inoney's here, maybe we can do it together?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, sure. Counselor Thompson, you got a motion?
No. Yeah.
Okay, okay. All those in favor?